Call to order. Senator Calvo, you recognize?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to temporarily move back to Chapter Two.
And then to return to Chapter Six, or Five, excuse me?
Yes, and then return to Chapter Five.
On that motion, without objections, ordered. We are now in Chapter Two. Senator Calvo, you recognize?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, we have amendments that have been passed out to the body, as well as you have received a copy of the amendments. And these amendments, again, are based on the discussions, the amendments that have been made over the past several weeks. So I'd like to make my first amendment, and this states, "To amend Section One of Chapter Two to reflect the following changes: And under general fund revenues after gross receipts tax, insert the Dave Santos Act Amendment with a dollar figure of $2,333,333."
On that motion? Yeah, it doesn't say.
It's on page, well, it is on page three. It's on page three of the engrossed draft, drafting gross bill. It's after gross receipts tax, and let me help, it's after line, it's between twenty-two, after line twenty-two, gross receipts tax, and after that, to insert the Dave Santos Act Amendment, $2,333,333.
On that motion? Any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. Next.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The next amendment is to amend Section One of Chapter Two to reflect the following changes. Again, it's under general fund revenues, and that is to amend the reflected amounts of licenses, fees, and permits from $1,452,186. Based on the new proposals, that would number now would configure to $4,152,186. And this is on page three, line thirty.
Senator Espisho, on the amendment?
Thank you very much, Ms. Speaker. Ms. Speaker, so this amendment reflects the, all the license and fees that are increased, as originally proposed in Bill Seventy-four. So my question is, did this number take into consideration anything that anybody said while we were in the Committee of the Whole, or any comments they made through various media sources?
Who are you asking?
Anybody that can give me an answer. Maybe, maybe the administration.
The, the adjustments to the license and fees reflects the revenue tax fees only.
Just the revenue, specifically to revenue tax?
Because those go directly into the general fund already. Any of the other fees will require additional amendments.
Okay, thank you.
On the motion? Any objection? Without objection, the motion carries. Next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The next amendment I have is to amend Section One of Chapter Two to reflect the following changes. And this is under the special funds revenue category, and after the environmental health fund, which is line four, after the environmental health fund, to insert the Guam Board of Accountancy Fund of $425,029.
On that motion?
I have one question. If the mover would yield.
What's the question?
I just wonder if this-
Questions get stated first before yielding. What's the question?
The question is, would this in any way deprive the Guam Board of Accountancy of any monies to operate?
Would you like to answer the question?
Sure, I'll yield to the question. Again, this was the amendment proffered from a senator earlier in the session to create the fund. And this is just, again, to reconcile the amendments that have made over these past several weeks. And so, this is just to identify the creation of that fund, again, that was placed, based on the amendment by, I think, Senator Shimizu, I recall.
On the amendment? Any objection? Objection, the amendment carries. Senator Calvo?
Okay, the next amendment, Mr. Chair, is to amend Section One of Chapter Two to reflect the following changes. And under, again, the special revenues, special fund revenue category, is to delete line L, which is in line ten, which is interim transition coordinating committee fund, the RTB stock redemption at $1,813,068.
On that motion? Is there any objection? We should discuss the motion?
I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, exactly what this, you're, you're just deleting it?
I'm not.
Senator Pangalina, this was based on your amendment to take the fund, the money from the fund, and apply it to different appropriations?
Right.
And so, then we're now striking out this as a special fund, so that the appropriation can be applied as your amendment read.
Okay, I understand. But this is, and, and the reason why we're deleting this is it's, it was identified in the amendment I made, and it was appropriated to the specific agencies of which their funding was restored. But we're not, so that we just don't double appropriate the same amount.
That's right.
Right, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
On the motion? Objections? Without objection, the motion carries. Next, Senator Calvo?
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next amendment is to amend Section One of Chapter Two to reflect the following changes. And this is under special fund revenues, to amend the amount reflected for the land survey revolving fund, which is line thirteen, to amend it from $950,000 to $2,729,192.
On the amendment, Senator Pangalina?
The, the effect of this amendment, I guess, is, is to delineate and articulate, I guess, the fee increases that are being proposed. So that, we know that land management's fees that they collect will now increase from $950,000 to $2,729,000, which is an average increase of 300 percent for every single fee at the Department of Land Management, across the board, basically. Some of the fees may have increased only 50 percent, some may have increased 1,000 percent. But what this means is that, at land management, the total fees collected under the land survey revolving fund was about a million dollars, and will now be close to a $3 million. So it'll be three times the amount. Correct? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
On the motion? Is there an objection? Without objection, the motion carries. Senator Calvo, you're next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next amendment is to amend Section One of Chapter Two to reflect the following changes. And this is under special fund revenues. The amount, amend the amount reflected for manpower development fund, which is O in line fourteen, from $148,485 to $1,48,485.
Huh? Excuse me? I'm sorry, I'm reading something. On that motion, Senator Pangalina, you recognize?
Yeah. I guess maybe it's just a technical form, but I don't understand why we're making these amendments. Wouldn't it be just a technical amendment, in that it's the calculation? All the fees have been, have gone through already. Have we acted on the fees all individually and have been discussed? And now it's just a matter of reconciling the revenue numbers and the line items to the later part of the body in which the fees have been increased. So if you're telling me that if I object here, we go back to the fees-
I suspect the concern was that, because we are talking about fees, and we are talking about such large increases in revenue, whether or not it would fall cleanly within the bounds of a purely technical amendment that could be handled during engrossment.
Exactly. So, you know-
So I think that the theory, well, we're almost done, actually. We're only, like, one away. So why don't we just finish off the exercise, since we're so close to the end?
Yeah. And, again, this is, this, this fee is about a thousand percent increase. And so, it's based upon the anticipated increase, the increase, of course, in the registration fee, plus the anticipated increase in H2?
In application, in the estimated, it's based on the increase, which was adjusted upward by the body-
Yes.
-and the number of applications that are there anticipating to come in for the remainder of the year.
So that means we're getting 600, 700 H2 workers in the next three months?
I believe the total was somewhere, the mix of applications and, and extensions, somewhere around 900.
900? But if it's at $1,000 a H2, that wouldn't be like... Okay. All right. Thank you.
On the motion? Senator Palacios and Senator Lahon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And request for clarification. I remember, I think yesterday or Friday was that, when we considered an amendment that, that only three agencies whose fees have been adjusted would be able to retain the, the adjustments, the increase. And that did not include, of course, the, remember well, the police service funds. Now we're adjusting, actually, the amount of these special funds. And I thought that the adjustments, or the differential in these increases, would go to the general fund account, and not to the special account, just the adjustment portion of it. So if we're gonna adjust here, then at the same time, the same adjustment is built into the general funds, there's gonna be double entry.
Actually, Senator, it's, I believe it's just a procedural issue where we have to book it first in the revenue category where it falls-
Okay.
-and then amendments must be made to appropriate them into the general-
Okay. I just wanna make sure that, okay, thank you.
We're just trying to clean up the revenue sheet.
My mind is clear. Thank you.
Senator Lahon, you recognize?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Chair. Chairman, I need some clarification. This, this fee increase actually is for the processing of the H2 workers coming to Guam, right? If I'm not mistaken?
That's correct.
Okay, if I'm not mistaken, as well, that applications are being, are being taken right now, but none of them are being processed. Have, has the United States reached the cap limit? What is the situation of that? Because what, what I don't want to see at this point now is that the application that have been turned in, that they're subjected to now, this bill passes, subjected to this fee increases, even if the application had, had been submitted prior. So would, would this fall under that?
I believe applications are being accepted and processed-
Okay.
-and the, this amount was provided by the Department of Labor-
Okay.
-based on what they anticipate for processing through the remainder of the year.
Okay. So are we saying that, at this point, then, that application then accepted, if this bill was passed as the law, that applications after May first then will be subjected to that increase, but applications prior, received prior to that, then would not be subjected to that fee increase? Is that-
That's correct.
Okay. But are, what is the impression of the fact that they're being accepted but not being processed?
They are, they are being processed, Senator.
They're being processed? Okay, so we have not met the cap then, at this point, in the H2, into the United States? Because we're, we haven't been, we haven't not, we're in the process of asking for the exemption, Guam being exempted, but we haven't gotten the exemption yet. So-
You know, I can't speak to that specifically. I can only say that what we have is what Department of Labor has anticipated to be what they'll process through the rest of the year. But we can, I can have the director speak to you directly on that, or come down and speak to the body.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Is there any else who wishes to speak on this? Is there any objection in the motion? Without objection, the amendment carries. I think we're getting close to the end here, aren't we?
Almost there, Mr. Chair.
Senator Calvo, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Mr. Chair, my next amendment is to amend Section One of Chapter Two to reflect the following change. And this, again, this is under the special fund revenue category. And this is to amend the amount reflected for the police services fund, which is line fifteen, that's P, and that's from $370,084 to $552,655.
Okay. On that motion? Is there an objection? Without objection, the motion carries. Senator Calvo?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next amendment is to amend Section One of Chapter Two to reflect the, the change. And this is under the federal matching grants in aid. And this is in, again, in line, line thirty-four C. And this is Guam Election Commission, and that's to delete it in its entirety. See Guam Election Commission, $700,000.
On that motion, is there an objection? Without objection, the motion carries. Next, Senator Calvo?
Okay. Again, finally, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, the, the last amendment here is to amend Section One of Chapter Two to reflect the change. And this is after federal matching grants in aid. You add a new four, and that four would be other revenues. And that kind of explains the earlier question by, by the previous speaker. For other revenues, A, GTA cushion account slash RTB stock redemption at $1,450,995. B, balances from dormant slash inactive funds and accounts, $1,666,537, with, with total other revenues totaling
Any objection to that motion? There being done, the motion carries. I believe that constitutes the entirety of the amendments to that chapter. We will take a brief recess while we prepare for the next thing we're going to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Are we gonna come back to this section, or are we just gonna proceed to other chapters?
Would you like to come back to this section?
Uh, yeah, because I had a couple of questions on the revenue projections.
Do you have a couple of amendments?
No, but I just want to ask-
So long, Senator Espisho, so long as we don't wind up in a long, drawn-out discussion of revenues again?
No, we won't. My question is, my question-
We'll come back. Paul is back in order. Senator Espisho, you recognize? We're still in Chapter Two.
Thank you very much, Ms. Speaker. Ms. Speaker, before we go to the chapter which, in which we're gonna determine what the various expenditures are gonna be, I first wanted to have some kind of discussion. And it's very important, and I think that this is something that should have been done from the very beginning. First, you determine what your revenues are, and then you determine your expenditures after that, to do it the other way around.
Senator Espisho, since you were not present at the time, I want to make you aware of the fact that revenues were discussed at great length over several days. I realize you were off-island or somewhere else at the time, but do not accuse the body of not having dealt with revenues.
Yeah, and it's not until I brought that point up-
Senator Espisho?
Here's the thing.
If you have some specific questions you'd like to ask, I suggest you do so. My tolerance for long-winded discourse at this point is just about zero.
Mr. Chief, I think people deserve transparency in this process. Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, my first question is, can the administration or the Office of Finance and Budget give this legislature an update to where we're at with Bill Seventy-four? That's my first question.
What is the question?
Can we, we've been asking for some time now for an update to where we're at with Bill Seventy-four, revenues versus expenditures. In, in order to proceed to the expenditure side, I'd like to know where we're at, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Can you define the question a little bit more narrowly, so that they have an opportunity to actually answer it?
Okay, the spending level versus the revised spending, it's about, the spending level is $489 million, correct? Maybe I can ask the administration, or maybe, maybe we can get some guidance from the chairman of the Office of Finance and Budget. I wanna know the spending, I have the information, spending level versus revised spending. There's a $21 million gap. However, the revised revenue versus tracking, there's still a $35 million difference.
Senator Espisho, I will permit you to ask questions with respect to revenues. If you want to get into expenditures in Chapter Three, I will allow you to ask questions about that as well. But at this point, where we are in Chapter Two, is we're attempting to determine what specifically the revenue levels are being adjusted to. Now, if you want to ask general questions about the balance, I think that will become manifest in Chapters Three and Four. But I really would rather not get into, considering the fact that we are about to get into those areas, discussions about the expenditure levels that this bill will permit.
But, Mr. Speaker, my concern-
Mr. Espisho, allow me to finish. You can, when we get to Chapters Three and Four, ask questions about the current, the current expenditure habits of the administration. I have no problem with that. What I don't want is, I don't want circuitous discussion. So if you have some specific questions about Chapter Two, which I agreed I would allow you to do, and if you have some specific questions about the revenue levels that are being proposed, in short, if you have questions about whether or not a particular revenue estimate is realistic, if you'd like to propose a different revenue level, fine. But what I won't do, Mr. Espisho, at this late juncture, is get into a long, circuitous discussion. We're too close to the end of this process to go back to that. So I urge you to confine your questions to the meat and the subject matter of Chapter Two, which is specifically revenue estimates. I'm sure you'll have a lot of questions you can ask about that, okay?
Ms. Speaker, this is what I was hoping, that the legislature nail down the revenue estimate. We've been going back and forth and adjusting the revenues as we adjust expenditures, or raising the revenues to meet the expenditure level.
If you have a specific series of questions about those revenue estimates, I will gladly entertain them within reason. If you want to get into a generalized discussion about the budget, I will not entertain that. Now, please, confine your questions to the subject matter at hand, or I will just find you out of order and we will proceed.
My question has always been, is it realistic to assume that, over the next five months, this government is gonna collect $35 million?
I have no problem. Is that a question you wish to ask?
I just asked it.
No. Ask the question specifically. Is it realistic to assume what?
Is it realistic to assume that, over the next five months, this government is gonna collect $35 million in various revenue enhancement components, whether it's the tax amnesty programs-
Okay.
-or increases in fees?
That is a question you can respond to.
Senator, thank you. You know, the Department of Revenue and Taxation, when they calculated out the tax amnesty, has, over and over in, during this Committee of the Whole, stated that, that, that they have taken steps to ensure that they've reached out to everybody who is affected by this, even to the point of say, of saying how much they owed and what they would save by the amnesty, based on previous amnesty collections and their aggressive outreach. Yeah, we're comfortable with the numbers that we presented.
Okay, Ms. Speaker, with Chairman Calvo, you owe to a question. And my question is, is it realistic to assume that this government is gonna collect $35 million over the next five months?
I think your question was answered. Now, your question is just meant to trap Senator Calvo and repair the box.
It's not, Mr. Chairman, you're, now you're being accusatory. No, I'm saying-
Why are you asking Senator Calvo-
We haven't had any checks and balances in this whole process.
Senator Espisho, why are you asking Senator Calvo precisely the same question? You just asked Mr. Delarosa.
Why not? Doesn't he's in charge of Office of Finance and Budget?
No, but are you now gonna ask every-
Isn't he the arm that's supposed to guide the legislature in this process?
Senator Espisho, are you now gonna ask every member of the legislature precisely the same question?
Absolutely not. I'm gonna ask Chairman Calvo, for his-
You would like, you would like to ask Senator Calvo precisely the same question you just asked the administration. That's what you're telling me?
And if I do so, am I gonna be ruled out of order?
No, no, it just, it just seems specious to me-
Specious, Mr. Chairman?
-to ask every member the same question you just asked.
I'm not gonna ask every member. I'm gonna ask the member that's supposed to guide the legislature in this process.
Ask the question, Senator Espisho, or ask Senator Calvo, he wishes to yield.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna have some kind of order here? Or are you gonna interrupt everything I'm saying?
You know, we are very close to having some kind of order, sir. Now, if you'd like to ask him the question, state it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Speaker, I've just asked the administration if it's realistic to assume that this government will collect $35 million over the next five months. I asked if Chairman Calvo would yield to a question. I posed a question, and then you interrupted me. And so the question is, Mr., to Chairman Calvo, is it realistic to assume that this government will collect $35 million over the next five months? That's a reasonable question, Mr. Speaker.
As long as I have your assurance, you won't ask every single one of us precisely the same question. Senator Calvo, do you yield to that question?
I will yield to the question, Mr. Chair.
Senator Calvo, proceed.
Obviously, I'm not a governor, and I'm not lieutenant governor, I'm not a director. But again, as finance chair, I, we, I, and the committee, and the legislature have taken the proposed revenues, revenue projections by the administration. They have stated to us, and they presented to us, revenue enhancements such as increased fee proposals. They have presented to us that there are certain projections they anticipate will, with income tax, property tax, and gross receipts tax amnesties. These numbers have been presented by the administration. I am not a member of the administration. I, like yourself, am a member of this legislative body. I can't answer the question whether they're realistic or not, because I am not the one that proposed these figures. But obviously, we have to look at the, the statements made by the administration. We have been in this process of asking questions over these many weeks, based on the proposals put out by the administration. And with that, we have to take that and make decisions on it. But it's, it's a question that I feel is, I'm not too sure if you're wanting my opinion. I mean, everyone has their opinion. Obviously, we, we, we can't predict the future, and I'm not there on a day-to-day basis. I'm not Art Ilagan, so I can't say whether the amnesty is, 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 will take in what they project to take in. I'm not at land management, so I'm not too sure whether land management fees will take in what they project to take in. I'm not at revenue tax with their proposed fee adjustments. So I can't make statements for them. So I wish I could answer your question, but again, I'm, I'm not the mover of these proposals. The, the administration has been.
My second question, Mr. Speaker, the chairman would yield, has the Office of Finance and Budget done any independent analysis to provide any check and balances to the information that this legislature is being provided by the administration?
Senator Calvo, do you yield that question?
Yes, I will yield. Thank you very much, again, for the question of the previous speaker. There has been many days, and you notice there are recesses, and there are reconciliations. Remember, the Office of Finance and Budget can assist on the reconciliation phase, and there has been a lot of reconciliation. I want to take my hat out to, to the members of my staff, because some numbers that have been presented, when there has been reconciliation from our, from the standpoint of OFB, there have been corrections. So in regards to the reconciliation of numbers, to ensure that the calculations are correct, there has been that check and balance by OFB. But again, when it comes to the proposed fee increases, and what they predict will, will come out, out of this amnesty, a lot of that is administrative, these are administrative decision, decisions based on those folks in management level and in the administrative level that have come up with these proposals. But yes, there has been reconciliation and checks and balance.
I've heard enough, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Are you done? You have no amendments to propose?
Not in this section, but in the following provisions. Thank you.
And just for the record, I want to make it clear that you've proposed no amendments to the, to the section having to do with revenues.
That's why, Mr. Chairman, I asked if there would be a motion to adopt the revenues, because I don't want it to seem like we're just adopting the revenues. Every member, by not saying any objections, is therefore objecting, adopting the revenues.
That's fine. That's fine. Just for the record, you haven't made any motions to change the revenues. Is there anyone else who wishes to discuss this section? There being none, we are done. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Proceed.
As a, as a technical, what section are we adopting, and what are we adopting?
No, he made the motion, so I'm going to vote, I'm going to ask for a vote on the motion. That's why I asked.
What is-
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. He broke it up into, into a multiple series- He broke it up into a multiple series of motions. Those motions have been adopted.
Those revenue numbers?
Yeah, they have been adopted.
The ones that we, where we amended them?
Yes.
The one, the previous?
Right.
The ones that were fairly technical in nature, which didn't really require us to adopt those because-
I know, we already went through that, Senator Pangolino.
I know, but where do they go? They go now, they went to Chapter 2.
They are now part of Chapter 2.
They are now part of Chapter 2.
Yes.
And so the question then is, the adoption of Chapter 2 has amended?
It has already occurred, yes.
That's the amendment? I mean, that's the motion?
No, the motion already, Chapter 2 was already adopted previously.
Okay.
There was a motion to substitute, as you recall, back when we were in Chapter 2. That motion passed.
Yes.
All right, these motions were to amend the numbers, which you pointed out could have been done technically perhaps.
Right.
But just to be 100% sure, the amendments were made to adopt the already previously adopted Chapter 2.
Okay.
Okay. With that, is there any further? You know, I did open the door, but somewhat to my regret. Do you have a, Senator Shimizu, do you have something you wish to?
Yes, I want to say good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
But as point of information, Chapter 2 has already been adopted.
Right.
And the good Chair, Senator Calvo, is making an amendment.
He made amendments.
He made them. Can you just state that for me one more time?
Every single amendment?
No, what his amendment was just-
There was a whole pile of them, Senator Shimizu.
Oh, he put the, so it's a whole slew of-
We went amendment by amendment by amendment.
Okay, so right now, we're going to adopt a slew of amendments?
No, it's already been adopted. They were moved as amendments. Each one was voted on. That's why I said, any objections? Without objections, so ordered, bang.
Okay, so they're already adopted?
They're adopted, yes, sir. That's what I said.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are done with that then. Senator Calvo, do you have a motion you'd like to make with respect to Chapter 3?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Again, Mr. Chair, again, based on the proposed by, proposed-
Nope, that's not the amendment we need.
Okay, there you go. I have an amendment right in front of you.
That's not the motion we need.
A motion to-
Go.
To go into the Chapter 3?
Yes.
For the purposes of making amendments?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make that motion.
That's the motion we need. Is there any objection to that? An objection? We're in Chapter 3, go ahead, Senator Calvo.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Again, the amendment I'm making, again, it's at the request of the Governor based on the proposals by the administration on spending. And the First Amendment I have here is to amend the following sections in Chapter 3. And this is to read Section 1, appropriations to the University of Guam. Would you like me to read the whole amendment, sir? Or everyone has a copy of it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order. And my point of order is, I didn't know the Governor can introduce amendments while we're in session.
I don't understand what's not in order with this amendment. Can you explain it to me?
It says, "At the request of the Governor." I thought the Governor, through the organic that, can only introduce bills to the legislature, but I didn't know that he had now-
I direct your attention to the line that says, "Senator proposing amendment."
But do you see the parentheses at the top, at the request of the Governor?
Take a look at the line that says, "Senator proposing amendment."
Mr. Chairman, it's very relevant if you ask me.
I'm asking you to take a look at the line that says, "Senator proposing amendment." Who's name, whose name do you see above that?
What's above that?
Senator, I see Edward J.B. Calvo, Senator proposing amendment.
We do have bills that the Governor introduces, and it's either at the request of the Governor or-
Senator Espisho, I'm going to rule on your point of order. Okay?
Does the Governor have the authority to-
I'm ruling on your point of order.
And what's your ruling, Mr. Chairman?
If you will stop talking, I will tell you. I find that the amendment is being proposed by Senator Edward J.B. Calvo, who is a member of the legislature and does have the authority to propose amendments. It is not the Governor's amendment, it is Senator Calvo's amendment. Now, if he wants to put in parentheses that he's doing it at the request of the Governor, that to me is apocryphal. This is my ruling, and if you want to debate my ruling, you will have to make a motion to overturn the chair. I will not permit you to discuss my ruling without a motion to overturn the chair, okay? If he wants to put, "At the request of the Governor," because he's trying to make some point, that's no different to me than if he puts an asterisk, draws a picture of Snoopy, has a garland of flowers drawn down the boundary. The bottom line is, what I read is Senator Edward J.B. Calvo is introducing this amendment. So if what you'd like is clarity that Senator Calvo is the member of the legislature introducing the amendment, I think that establishes that. To me, this is clearly an amendment in order, and that is my ruling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So it's the Calvo amendment.
Are you continuing the discussion after my ruling? I just want to be clear. Proceed, Senator Calvo.
I feel like I'm in junior high school, Mr. Speaker. Appropriate, again, amend the following sections in Chapters-
Senator Calvo, I understand, I understand.
My apologies.
No more extraneous comments. You're making an amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is, again, Section 1 appropriations to the University of Guam. Section 1 and Section 1A, Part 2, Chapter 2 of Public Law 28-149, are hereby amended to read. And I guess I'll just make the area, in Section 1, where to delete 32 million, this is appropriations to the University of Guam, $32,963,722 is deleted to be amended to $32,704,588. And then, of course, there's been a scratching out of, deletion of appropriated.
I think everyone, that's amendment number 1.
You know, Senator Calvo, I'm going to ask for a brief recess because as I look at this, these things were sent in like five different packets.
Yeah.
So it may be number 1, but in which packet would be a nice thing to know. So I'm going to give a 20-second recess here so that everybody can find the specific amendment you are moving on. We'll take a recess for 20 seconds here. On your first amendment, Senator Calvo, and the University of Guam.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Again, you'll see the amendment in the bottom left-hand portion of the amendment. It says 1. So again, this has been passed out to the members of the body. And again, I'm proffering this amendment. And this says appropriations to the University of Guam. Shall I repeat the whole amendment again, Mr. Chair?
Had you stated the whole amendment previously?
Duh, on second thought, I didn't. I went on to the University of Guam. Let me state it for the record. Again, appropriations to the University of Guam. And then we go to Section 1 appropriations to the University of Guam. The, we're deleting the original amount of $32,963,722 with a new number at $32,704,588.
Can you do it one number at a time, please?
Sure.
All right.
And then we go to A?
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would anybody wish to discuss this first appropriation change? Senator Guthberts, then Senator Pangolino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. Mr. Chairman, I must object to this particular reduction to the University of Guam. Earlier in our session, I think it was the second week, I objected to the reduction in the 2.5% levels for the university as well as the other educational institution and organizations. And then I understood we're going to have a 5% reduction because of non-compliance with reporting requirements. And this particular amendment, Mr. Speaker, in Section A, will result in a 1% automatic deappropriation, again, to the university.
Senator Guthberts?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd just like to interrupt a little bit because I can see where maybe something here might be a little bit confusing. That, you know, if you wish to object to the motion, that's entirely up to you. And if your objection succeeds, then his motion will fail. However, I do want to point out that we won't be reverting to the figure $32,963,722. Rather, we will revert to the much lower figure that has already been adopted, the 2.5% cut.
No, I understand.
I think the purpose of this is to, I just want you, because I think you're going to make an amendment, I want it to be clear.
Sure.
The purpose of this is actually to reduce the reduction because of the 5% cut. So instead of 2.5, it's only 1%. So if you decide you want to make a motion, what I would suggest to you is rather than, you know, move to just kill this, which will instead bring back the 2.5% cut, which would, I think, defeat the purpose you're trying to accomplish, I suspect. And I'm doing this because you're still a freshman, Senator, I want to make sure you accomplish what you're trying to accomplish. I would suggest to you that if you want to take it to, I think what you want to do is you want to take it to status quo, right? You need to make an amendment to do that.
All right.
Okay?
All right.
So would you like to have a minute to work on that?
Does it have to be in writing, Mr. Speaker?
It would help, but you see, doing it in writing is not as complicated as having the legal counsel type it out for you.
We'll do it in writing.
We also have, just so you know, we have amendment forms with blank lines on them that you can just fill out by hand.
Okay.
And that is acceptable.
And we'll come back to this.
And for this purpose, I don't think that would be problematic.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
And I'm doing this in the interest of making the conversation move forward and not go around. So since I suspect you're going to want to make an amendment, we'll take a one-minute recess so you can make it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues before you is an amendment. Section 1 appropriations to the University of Guam. Section 1 of Part 2, Chapter 2 of Public Law 28-149 is hereby amended to read appropriations to the University of Guam. The amounts in the subsections below totaling $32,963,722 are from the, are-
Are from the-
Are from the following funds and for the following purposes, the University of Guam for fiscal year 2007. General Fund Appropriations for Operations. The sum of $24,616,947 is appropriated from the General Fund to the University of Guam for its operations in fiscal year 2007. Mr. Speaker, the amendment is intended to ensure that the university doesn't find itself in a situation where it has to increase tuition before students in order to be able to continue offering its programs. The university is operating in, like most groups, hand amounts existence. And unfortunately, its only avenue to deal with its financial problems will be to pass on additional costs to the students. The students have already encountered a tuition increase this past year. And they are expected to have one next school year. But this would require the university, if its funds are further reduced, would require the university to increase the tuition even more. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, I want to thank the mover of the amendment for, again, you know, she, again, has worked at University of Guam and understands the importance of secondary, post-secondary education. And you know, it's with a heavy heart that I have to object to this, to this amendment because you have to understand the whole basis, again, based on the proposals made up by the administration as to this amendment that has been proffered. And if you can recall, we have over 20-some million dollars in a shortfall to make a balanced budget, even with the 5% deappropriation that would automatically occur as a result of non-reporting requirements. In fact, I've been getting for several days now messages from every, many agencies. I know many of my colleagues have also been talking about the 5% deappropriation. They've been asked about restoring. But if you look at the big picture here, even with the 5% deappropriation across the board, there is a little bit over $5 million shortfall in the government budget if we want to have a balanced budget. The proposal by the administration would be to balance that shortfall to get a certain dollar amount, which is about $1.8 million, out of special funds to help correct this imbalanced budget. And many of you also have issues of where that $1.8 million would come from special funds. Even with that $1.8 million taken out of special funds, we're still short by $3.1 million to balance the budget. What the administration is proposing is that that $3.1 million shortfall, that it be spread out over all agencies and some burden being placed on all agency, I think it's about 1% of their total budget, to be cut in order to balance the budget. For every restoration to full dollar amounts as appropriated in the previous, in the previous budget, then there has to be consideration of how do you make up for the imbalance? Will the imbalance come out of another department? Or, excuse me, will the difference be made up from one department or the other department? What I fear in going in this road, we may become in a situation where, as we move to restore this agency, then the next agency, then the next agency, then we'll be left with a $22 or $23 million shortfall. So again, I would love to see the full restoration of appropriations to the University of Guam if it were a perfect world and we had the revenue sources. But again, based on what we have projected as revenues coming to the Government of Guam, to add an additional dollar is an additional dollar in imbalance in this budget and will grow this deficit even further. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Senator Pangolino?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just, I'm trying to understand the rationale at least, or if not the rationale, definitely the process of where we're going at here and what we're trying to do. The legis, we had already adopted the revenue or the appropriation levels in Bill 74 that reflected a 2.5% cut. So that is really what's in the bill now in Section 1. And so we are now going back to that deappropriation or the reduction of 2.5% in the appropriation level, restoring the 2.5% and then reducing it by the original 32963 to 32704 at, I guess, a 1% cut or somewhere in that neighborhood in the hopes or in the promise, probably, more rather than hope, in the promise that that number then, the 3072, will be further reduced by 5%. Is that correct?
The deappropriation is in the current law, and we will implement the deappropriation of 5%. It doesn't reflect here in the appropriation levels because what we didn't want to do is double deappropriate.
Right.
Reflect it here and then deappropriate by law again.
Yes, I understand that, I understand. So that's what we're doing here.
Yes.
So in effect, Mr. Chair, I, you know, just get, just for the record here, I've got to just raise a point of order here in terms of that we are now going back and reconsidering every action that this body has with regards to the budgets of these different sections and departments that were now being proposed to be reduced by. So I just want to raise that point of order because, you know, I mean, that's, that's, we're coming back. Now, that's why- Oh yeah, but it's not a valid motion, is what I'm saying. It's a reconsideration of which, technically. Okay. So why and how did you decide that the reduction was going to be this amount?
We factored in the deappropriation amounts and the impact it would have on the appropriation side of the budget and recognized an additional shortfall beyond that. So we then- So, uh, we then, uh, distributed that shortfall among all the agencies in a prorated fashion so that whatever percentage of the general fund they received, they received that percentage of the three point one million dollars.
Now, did you, but the agencies did not receive their budgets all from the general fund? Some received from the special funds?
That's correct. This only affects the general fund portion.
So when, when you decrease the... But you also decreased the gen- the, the special fund appropriations to those agencies, is that correct?
They, whatever, um, wherever the deap- the reporting law applied...
Right.
Uh, to special funds, the deappropriation is occurring because that's what the law tells us.
Can you tell me what those are?
I believe, uh... Yes, there was a handout on Friday, but I can read them to you if that's what you...
There was a handout that indicated...
Provided Friday.
If you don't have it in front of you, uh, let's take a, a very brief recess to make sure everybody's got a copy of the handout. That might make things move a little quicker than having them recite it all.
All right. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the, um, the deappropriation then from the University of Guam is, uh, it doesn't identify the fund that it's appropriating, but there was a two...
It's T E F F, sorry.
Two million dollar appropriation, two point two six. And then you're taking a five percent cut out of the, um... Out, out of that T E F F.
Yes.
And then, once you did all that for all the other agencies, you still, in order to balance the budget, you're saying you needed another three point three million dollars?
An additional three point one, and that was from actual just general fund. We did not calculate in these at this point.
So if you cut, if you...
When we calculated the general fund operations appropriations for the agencies...
Right.
Took, took the deappropriation exercise. We were still actually four point nine short. We took three point one of that, distributed in, prorated to the agencies, and then...
Which is, which is reflective then in the University of Guam's deappropriation or new appropriation level of three oh seven, the amendment?
Thirty-two, yes, the amended, that, that's in front of you now. The thirty-two million...
Thirty-two seven oh four.
Correct.
So the... So in the end, the agencies are lea- are, are being cut more than five percent?
That's correct.
Okay. And so it's, 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 it's barely... So the, the idea was there's no consultation with the University of Guam on what this means to their operations or their budget. It was just, we're just going to have to force it. It's a forced balance. It's, we're trying to, it's, it's a plug number, basically. No rhyme or reason to the needs of the agency or the department.
We recognize, Senator Pangolino, that, that the reductions reflected are going to affect all agencies. Um, and the five percent deappropriation. And in order to, uh, provide the same application for what was remaining, we just prorated it, the three point one into everybody.
Right.
No, there was no consultation with the university.
There was no consultation to the department.
We were simply trying to match what the expenditure authorities would be to what revenues have been discussed and approved on this floor.
All right. So we have no idea what this would mean to UOG?
That's correct.
That's true. And you're not prov- s- you have no idea, we don't have any idea. We knew that they had a problem with two point five. They'll have a bigger problem with five point, a five percent cut. Now they'll even have a bigger problem with a six percent cut, basically.
Yes, they will.
So blind faith that it'll work.
Uh, necessity.
Thank you.
Uh, Senator Spishah?
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Speaker.
Try and stay on the amendment too, please.
Thank you, Ms. Very much, Mr. Speaker. Um, what this amendment, um, really does, uh, I think it, um, is pretty significant uh, in that it's a prelude of what probably has to happen with all the other departments and agencies.
We're, we're currently discussing the government's...
Because this, this amendment would force the issue. Um, Senator from Engila wants to restore, uh, the University of Guam's budget to the, uh, original, uh, funding level, or at least that can, that's contained in, um, current law, public law twenty-eight dash, um, one forty-nine, I believe. But, uh, right now, if, if the main amendment passes, the, uh, total cut to the university will be one point four million dollars. Uh, when the University of Guam came to the legislature, uh, to testify, uh, regarding a two and a half percent cut, uh, they were only speaking to, uh, six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And so this impact obviously would be, uh, double. Um, and I ask, um, I ask, Mr. Chairman...
You have the opportunity when we get to that section or when we get to section five, if you choose to, to make an amendment and debate it thoroughly, uh, restoring part or all, if you want to, of the university's five percent cut. Uh, I'm only trying to just get us back on track here a little bit. We are currently discussing the Guthert's Amendment to the Amendment. The Guthert's Amendment to the Amendment very specifically restores a number, and that number is thirty-two million nine hundred sixty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars.
And it's very, and it's very...
So can we kind of stay on that?
And it's very...
And if we want to talk about the five percent cut, let's talk about it.
But it's very difficult to speak on the, uh, merit of the amendment uh, because we don't know what this, um, what the main amendment would do and how would impact the, uh, University of Guam and what those consequences might be.
Well, currently, the main amendment would actually, and this is the point I'm trying to make, and I just want to split this into bite-sized chunks, okay? So we can eat one chunk at a time. The current amendment, if it fails, uh, will restore the two point five percent cut, all right? Forget about the five, I mean, that five is still going to be there, so it's not seven point five. Um, the amendment by S- Senator Calvo cuts it by one percent. The amendment to, by Senator Guthert's basically, uh, amends that so that it doesn't cut it at all. So we confine ourselves to debating that and not talk about, you know, all the implications of everything that could possibly happen.
And, and the five percent, uh, automatic deappropriation will be based on this revised, uh, appropriation level if the main amendment, um, passes.
Or which way do you go? Yeah, presumably, that's true. So I'm just saying, you know...
And is there going to be any, um, discussion by the legislature at all to determine what that deappropriation, uh, how that would impact all the various, uh, government agencies?
Well, there was a, uh, a handout that was presented, it was passed out.
No, we, we know, Ms. Ms. Speaker, we...
You know, if you're going to ask me a question, can I just finish the answer before you cut me off again? There is a handout that was passed off, uh, passed out, so you can see the financial implication. Um, and if anybody wants to make a motion to deal with that in any way, shape, or form, because I know there's going to be other motions going to be made by other senators when we get to that, talking about the five percent cut. I'm fully aware of that. You're perfectly welcome to do it.
It's understood what the bottom line impact would be, but, uh, last week, we've asked the administration to, uh, quantify for us the, uh, individual, uh, impact, uh, that this, this, that this five percent...
I believe that handout has been passed out, Senator Spishah.
But Mr. De La Rosa knows that we were asking for more than just the bottom line number, Mr. Speaker. We could have done that ourselves. We wanted a, um, a summary of what the, uh, a five percent reduction would mean for all these, uh, department and agencies. You can ask him if he, if he believes what I'm saying would be...
Do you have that information, Senator, uh, Mr. De La Rosa?
We're still verifying those numbers, but we should have that shortly.
Apparently, they are still verifying it, but they don't have it at the moment.
There were some, there were some questions about the public health numbers and how to separate out the funding.
But are we, are we going to continue to proceed in this fashion to make these decisions, uh, not knowing exactly what this, uh, impact would mean to the departments and agencies?
With respect to the amendment currently before us, which is a, a move to restore, I don't see how necessarily one has to do with the other. I think Senator Guthert's, uh...
I appreciate why Senator Guthert's is doing this and I, and, and like many of us here, we'd like to hear from the University of Guam uh, to see what, uh, what one point four, five, one point five million dollars would do to their agency over the next five months. Does Mr., can Mr. De La Rosa speak to that?
I cannot speak to the impact it's going to have on the university. I do just want to clarify that our recognition of the five percent deappropriation is a recognition of what the, the, what, uh, carrying out what the law requires does. So, um, we factor it in because it's the reality that everybody faces right now. The university would have had a five percent deappropriation anyway.
Okay, I'm going to say this one last time and then that's it. I would like the conversation to be confined as much as possible to the Guthert's Amendment to the Calvo Amendment.
But you see how a decision on the Guthert's Amendment, Mr. Speaker, would affect our decisions on all the other, uh, sections and chapters?
Global warming will no doubt have an effect on whether or not tourism will increase in Guam and the effect it'll have on our budget, but we're not going to have a discussion about global warming.
And we're not even going to have a discussion about what this, uh, uh, financial impact would mean to the various agencies? I thought that's why we're in this budget section.
Do you want to bring in every single agency on the five percent? Is that what you want to do, Senator Spishah?
Not necessarily, Mr. Speaker, but we spent weeks, if not...
Senator Spishah, will, will this knowledge prevent you in any way, shape, or form from voting one way or another on the Guthert's Amendment to the Amendment?
Absolutely, and I haven't even decided what my final disposition would be.
Well, I think the request to cease operations here and bring in every department so you can make a decision about whether or not we should restore a hundred and some thousand dollars to the University of Guam is a bit out of line. If what you would like to do...
It's more than a hundred and some thousand, Mr. Speaker, it's one point five million.
No, at the current moment, it is not. This amendment to the amendment is very specific. Now, I don't want to say it another time. We are talking about the Guthert's Amendment to the Amendment.
So I'll bring this up when, when we talk about the main motion.
Fine, but for now, we're talking about the Guthert's Amendment to the Amendment. Thank you. Senator Guthert, would you like to close on your amendment to the amendment?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. Uh, I offered this amendment and, uh, just for clarification, it, it deals with section one and section one, one A of part two, chapter two of public law twenty-eight dash one four nine. I'm very, very concerned, Mr. Speaker, uh, for the university as I am for all of our educational institutions. I believe, uh, if the cuts to the university are sustained, and this would be at the six percent level, the five percent plus one percent, we are really prejudicing the ability of the university to keep its doors open. Senator Spishah was correct. Earlier, we spoke to the university at our initial discussions with them here in this hall, the committee on the whole, about a two point, two point five percent cut. Now we're talking about a six percent cut. They cannot sustain their academic programs, retain faculty, maintain their facilities if they are going to receive a cut of nearly one point five million dollars to their current budget. And I'd like to remind my colleagues that university has not received for this fiscal year, I believe, close to eight million dollars in its authorized budget. So this would just make it even worse. Now, yes, I understand the difficulties we're all having and I do appreciate the work of Senator Calvo in trying to find a way to balance the budget. But I also want to remind my colleagues that, uh, particularly the last legislature took a very strong position to commit itself to support education.
Absolutely.
And it seems that we're sort of standing aside from that commitment, although the rationale may be legitimate and so forth. It's just, having been an educator, I can tell you when you remove this amount of money from an institution this quickly, it is going to result in serious deficiencies in its programs. And it's very, very difficult to recover. The university's made a lot of progress in the last few years and, uh, we don't want to see that prejudice. And we certainly don't want to see our people who are the students of the university hurt. And this definitely will hurt our students. If this passes, if this doesn't pass and university sustains a six percent reduction in its authorized budget, it is going to pass on any additional mechanisms to sustain itself to our students and will become very, very unaffordable for the students of Guam and the region to go to UOG. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthert. On the motion... I'm sorry. On the motion, I see some objections. Um, all those in favor of the Guthert's emotion, please signify by... Emotion, sorry. The Guthert's motion, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, three votes, the motion fails. Senator Calvo? You have a second part to this and a third part?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, uh, the second portion to this amendment is, again, reads section two, Guam Educational Telecommunication Corporation.
No, I believe, um, they also...
Oh, I'm sorry, general fund.
Point of information, Mr. Speaker. I'm just trying to follow the, I know the amendment and he's trying to, um, make them as they appear in the bill. But in the original bill seventy-four, there is no B to the University of Guam appropriation language.
Right, because it's amending the budget bill. That's why there's only an A.
So where did B come from that it's now in the...
I'm sorry, where's the B?
Drafting gross, chapter three. If you go to the original bill seventy-four, which is what's on the floor, it had...
What page?
Um, page six of the original bill.
Gotcha.
You have the section one, and then it is appropriations to the University of Guam and then restates. Um, and there's a A, the general fund appropriation.
Excellent question. Uh, Senator Calvo, was there a motion previously when we were in revenues that attached to B?
Yeah, I don't recall. That's why I'm asking.
Uh, if you want, what we'll do is we'll ask the clerk. She can go through the amendments, okay? So let's, uh, take a, a very brief pause. I'm sorry, did you have something for me? Yeah, as we just need to know, was there an amendment that added the B? That's all. To chapter three. And if there was an amendment, who moved it? Yeah, we'll take a very brief recess so the clerk can dig out the amendment and, uh, and give it to Senator, uh, Pangolino. Okay, it's not going to affect, okay, all right. Then we'll proceed, we'll proceed and have it when this thing comes out.
The question I have, though, or...
Does it affect the presence or absence of B? All right, then we'll wait until we have...
There's a deappropriation, right?
Then we'll wait until we have B, because if it's going to affect it, let's make sure that we've got that squared away. Okay, one second. Appropriation. I mean...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, um, the reason I asked that was, um, because there was a deappropriation of the special funds. Um, I wanted to be sure that, that this was in here because there was a deappropriation or a, or no deappropriation for the special funds. So my understanding, according to the chair, is that UOG's special fund appropriation is not being reduced and that this really is just a, uh, insertion based upon the original law which has it, but it's not part of the proposed, uh, amen- uh, provision to be amended in bill seventy-four. So it should really just be deleted.
Okay. So on A, any further discussion? Any objection? Without objection, uh, that passes. Uh, basically, what passes here then is both A and, uh, and one. All right, the, we're going to... Again, these things are not, uh, broken down quite as nicely they could be. But on section two, dealing with the Guam Educational Telecommunication Corporation, again, we have an A situation. Uh, Senator Calvo?
Yes, thank you ver- thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Again, section, the amendment is in section two, the Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, K G T F. Uh, we want to amend section one and section one A, part four, chapter two of public law twenty-eight one four nine. And it's amended to hereby read as a section one appropriation to the Guam Educational Telecommunication Corporation, K G T F. The amounts in the subsections below totaling, and we're going to delete five hundred and seventy-six thousand and sixty-four dollars uh, to be replaced by five hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars. And this is for K G T F. And then...
We'll deal with them separately.
Okay.
First, on the, the first part. Any objection? No objection, it carries. A, which simply enacts that, go ahead.
Okay, then the next...
It's not really necessary to read, uh, read the number.
Deleting five hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars to five hundred...
It's not deleting, it's just reducing.
Own, I mean, not delete, uh, uh, reducing to five hundred and nine thousand and sixty-one dollars.
Okay, on that, is there any objection? No objection, it carries. Section three, dealing with the Guam... Without objection, it carries. Section 3, dealing with the Guam Public Library System?
Yes, the next amendment, sir, Senator, Mr. Chair, is again, the Guam Public Library sys- uh, system, and that is to reduce from $1,904,537 to $1,892,070.
It is restored. It's, it's a further cut. Senator Pangolinan?
Obviously, Mr. Chair, um, I object to that amendment. The amendment was discussed earlier in terms of when the library's appropriation was being reduced by 2.5%. And at that time, we, um, as a body, decided that we would restore the full funding of the library, and now they're coming back and having a second shot at it. You know, and I'd like a second shot at others too, but, yeah, sometimes, you know, that's a, shouldn't be the way it happens. So, um, I, I object and would, uh, move to restore the original, um, funding amount for the library of-
Well, in this case, a motion to delete would be appropriate because I would restore the-
Yes, so I would just move that we delete, uh-
Or, or actually just vote no if you don't want to on the motion. If this motion fails, then it, it goes to full funding.
Right.
So-
But I just wanna make sure everybody that, uh-
Yeah.
Is aware of what, what had transpired before. Thank you.
All right, Senator Blas and then Senator Espisho.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Chair, actually, I have a question for Mr. Delarosa, somebody from the administration, and I know they're still here. Can we ask for a recess or get him?
Is, Mr. Delarosa around? Senator Calvo, are you aware of the whereabouts of Mr. Delarosa?
Mr. Chair, ask for a recess so we can get him in.
Okay, I'll take a very brief recess so someone can get J- John Delarosa, please. The call's called order. Um, we were on the Guam Public Library System, uh, amendment. There's been some discussion, uh, clearly there's objections to this, uh, amendment. Senator Espisho?
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Speaker. Ms. Speaker, um, this is another amendment that, um, assumes that the automatic, uh, deappropriation, uh, is going to occur within the administration. And while on the surface, it appears that this amendment would cut the, uh, Guam Public Library by about $12,467, in actuality, if this amendment should pass, the, uh, library would receive a $71,062 cut. Uh, that's, uh, the Calvo amendment, uh, on top of the, uh, 5% automatic deappropriation, which would be-
Was our last conversation totally pointless?
I, I beg your pardon, Mr. Speaker?
Was our last conversation totally pointless?
I don't believe there's anything I said so far that's been pointless. I'm wanting to point out-
I actually didn't say anything about what you said. I said, was our last conversation totally pointless? If you wish to discuss this amendment, fine. If you're gonna constantly use it, I mean, I think it's already established, Senator Espisho, beyond the need for constant repetition, that this is one of two sets of cuts contemplated, okay? I think it's established, and if we're simply going to constantly repeat that, I really see no per-
But, Mr. Speaker, after I say these things, even you yourself say that it represents a 1% cut. It does not represent-
For the 13th time in a row, and I swear to you the last, the amendment before us represents one cut. It is established clearly that there are additional cuts coming. We don't need to constantly say that. If what we're doing is discussing this amendment, which we are, and for the benefit of Senator Espisho so that he understands this, unlike, unlike the situation that we were faced with the University of Guam, as Senator Pangolinan has pointed out, if this is defeated, this amendment, actually, the budget is restored 100% up to this point, because previously, the legislature restored the Guam Public Library to 100% of its budget. So the 2.5% cut has, that was originally proposed, has already been dismissed. So I beg you, Senator Espisho.
And I, and I beg to differ, Mr. Speaker, that it does not restore the public library to its funding level, because the library is still facing a $59,000 cut because of that 5% deappropriation.
When we get to the 5% cut, you may discuss it ad nauseam.
Mr. Chairman, we're already there.
No, we are not. What we are currently discussing is very clearly-
I might, I might be the only one that's not understanding what's happening here.
It's clearly written in English, and that's what we're gonna discuss, Senator Espisho. And if you continue to discuss things other than the amendment before us, I promise you, I will rule you out of order.
You might as well, Mr. Speaker, because even though I'm talking-
Then you're out of order. Next per- speaker? Next speaker? Anybody else wish to speak? The amendment? Senator Shimizu?
This amendment is, is, uh, to reduce again the, uh, the budget, right?
Yes, as written.
And, um, what would be the impact? That's what I wanna know.
Unfortunately, uh, no one is here from the administration to answer your question, so would you like to direct your question to someone?
Um, well, I know it's been reduced. Again, I, we're back, um, on track to try to get a balanced budget. I think that's what we're trying to do. And, just like the, the other cuts that we're dealing to get a, a balanced budget, you know, I, um, I, I just wanna know how, what would this impact, and the administrations are not here. I know we've been waiting for about an hour earlier. And since you brought that up, do you have any idea, Mr. Speaker, where and when, I mean, when can we have the administration back?
I've been informed by Senator Calvo that Mr. Delarosa is on his way back. That is the extent of my information.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to this amendment? It's not in the amendment, right? All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this amendment? Senator Gutherson, you're recognized.
Again, Mr. Chairman, it, it's very ironic, uh, that, uh, the Guam Public Library System would experience a cut when it's trying to reopen its, uh, village libraries right now. And this morning, they had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for one library, I believe in Mariso, and they're trying to open up other ones that have been closed. So I, I ask the colleagues here, all of our colleagues, to please think carefully about this. What are we doing to this community? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this amendment? There being none, there has been objection. All those in favor of the amendment by Senator Calvo, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, the amendment. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I count eight.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
What is your point of order? State it clearly.
Is it really, uh, eight votes required to adopt this amendment?
Yes, it is.
Or would it be 10? 'Cause essentially, you're, you're doing a notwithstanding the House rules.
Nope.
We've already, this is a mo- this is similar to a motion to reconsider.
All right, I will rule. Are you done? We already had a motion previously to go back specifically-
This is a very dangerous precedent to just allow the same number of votes it takes to adopt something as opposed to-
If you are asking me to give a ruling, then I beg you to allow me to state the ruling before you dispute it. May I rule? No, I, I want your permission, Senator Espisho. May I rule?
Mr. Chairman, you're gonna decide what to do anyway.
Well, that is the nature of being chair, isn't it? If you don't like my ruling, you may, it is within your authority, dispute the ruling, and if you get 10 votes, you can overturn the ruling, right? Okay. My ruling is as follows. We already had a motion that passed without objection to go back to this chapter specifically for this purpose. All right, so eight votes is sufficient, all right? Now, I counted eight. The motion passes. Next?
Yeah, thank you very, Mr., uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair-
Another point of order, Mr. Chair?
Point of order.
The, um, the bill also has, again, once again, the, um, the inclusion of the special fund deappropriation, which is not in the original Bill 74.
You talking about that section again?
Yes.
Is this the same, uh, problem that we had, uh, with the previous section? I'm addressing this to the clerk. We'll take a one-minute recess so that the clerk can research it. He believes it creates symmetry, but if it's gonna create confusion for the members or in any way distract them, then we'll simply leave it out, uh, of the engrossment. Senator Calvo, you have another motion, do you not?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the, the next amendment in front of you, again, it has on the bottom of the page to the left, number 2. And this is add a new section, blank to Chapter 3, and these are appropriations to the Guam Public School System for fiscal year 2007. And then it's Section 2 appropriations to the Guam Public School System for fiscal year 2007. And the motion is to delete $184,346,466 to be replaced with $183,442,107. And then-
Okay, one second. Chair? I gotta speak on this. I gotta speak on this.
All right. Speaker Forbes, followed by Senator Gutherson.
Um, I have a concern, mainly with the construction of the, um, of the section. First off, let me say that, uh, you know, this is something that Senator Wampar and I discussed before she left. And both of us agree that, that some degree of, uh, belt-tightening a GPSS is probably, uh, meaningful. And indeed, uh, I believe Senator Gutherson was at the last, uh, meeting that we had prior to going into this budget session where we were attempting to discover areas in GPSS where we could, uh, reduce some appropriations. So some degree of, of, uh, deappropriation is not necessarily anathema to me, so long as it doesn't prevent the school system from operating, and so long as it's targeted specifically at areas where there, there are, uh, there, there may be a little bit of fat. But the one thing I'm a little bit concerned about is the way that this particular section plays out. Is because, when the original language was passed, we made specific reference to the 14% teacher salary adjustment and, and things of that nature. Um, I'm wondering- Is anybody sharing? I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, why, um, we found it necessary in the original language to specifically target and mention the 14% teacher salary adjustment. And I'm wondering if the chairman would yield to that question, just so I can get some sense of that.
Senator Calvo, will you, will you yield to the speaker?
Can the speaker repeat the question, please?
Certainly. Only because it's been highlighted and, uh, you know, I, I wanna make sure I understand why. Why in Section 2, Subsection A, did we specifically, uh, target and highlight the 14% teacher salary adjustment recommended by the Department of Administration as being part of this appropriation? As well as, uh, $1,980,345 for software training system conversion services, things of that nature.
Yes, I will yield to the question.
You're recognized.
Thank you. I, I will yield to the question by the speaker. Uh, again, Mr. Speaker, uh, these particular mo- amendments that have been moved forward by the administration is part of their proposal. The best ones to answer, and I don't have an answer, and that's-
I'm not talking about the amended language, I'm talking about the language in the existing budget. I just wanna have my memory refreshed, why it was necessary for us to specifically reference the 14%.
Oh, yeah. That was to build clarity, because if you can recall, in the discussions over the budget, uh, there were some, there was, uh, representations made by representatives of the Guam Public School System, as well as members of the body, when the debate was occurring, whether there was enough funds to, uh, that were adequate to cover the 14% increase. And this language was inserted to bit, to, to, uh, to ensure that we, that there was surety by the members of the body that there was sufficient revenues to take into consideration the 14% cut. It had been considered and allocated, that increase in the, um, in the total dollar appropriation necessary, uh, to effectuate the increase in salaries. So, again, this was a result in those times when there was discussions and whether there was enough adequate funding to cover the 14%. And the calculations were made on what the, the, um, increases in, in operating requirements to cover those, uh, increases in pay. And, again, it was just to bring clarity to the body and to the public that the spirit of that 14% increase was taken into effect.
Thank you very much. That, that clears it up for me. Thank you.
Okay, on the, um, the motion of Senator Calvo, Senator Gutherson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, uh, same concerns that I have for the university, I have for the Guam Public School System. Certainly, the Guam Public School syst- system leaves much to be desired. But at the same time, Mr. Chairman, I'm very, very concerned about, uh, the cuts that the school system will receive if this section of the bill proceeds, because it certainly will have an impact on the classrooms. I cannot support anything that will impact the classrooms. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on the, uh, Calvo's amendment, Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, um, you know, uh, with regards to, to, to the cuts, and I appreciate the, um, the sentiments of, of the retired speaker. And, uh, you know, it, it really pains me that when we're gonna have to make decisions such as this. But you know, Mr. Speaker, or Mr. Chair, unfortunately, this, you know, our, our revenues and situation that we're in today dictate, need to dictate some of the actions that, uh, we're taking. And, and one of these actions is actually having to make those hard decisions about cutting into the, um, into the revenues that are supposed to go to the different agencies. We're cutting into these things because, quite honestly, based on all the discussions, on all the projections, there's just not enough money. And if we have to continue to provide an agency with an appropriation which I don't think anybody in this body will actually believe we can ever get to, my concern is that all we're gonna be doing is fulfilling an empty promise. Whereas, if we can try to get and recognize that these cuts have to be made based on revenues that we think now are going to be coming in, I think it's easier so that these agencies would know, the people would know, that this is all the money that we've got. You know, over the last few weeks, we've gone through a whole exercise of raising fees and exempting or removing tax exemptions. And people have gone and expect that, in order for them to be able to swallow the increase in these fees or, or the removal of these tax exemptions, is that there're gonna have to be some belt-tightening. You know, it hurts me just as much as it hurts everybody else here. But, you know, when it comes down to it, these cuts have to be made. They have to be made so that this, you know, we can continue to, and granted that we're not gonna be able to fund a lot of the program, other programs that, uh, the, that some of these agencies currently have. But some of the programs are better than no program. And so, with that, I support the amendment, recognizing that these cuts have to be made. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
On the, uh, Calvo's amendment? Senator Spalding? Senator Spalding?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, like the previous speaker, I agree that these are, these are difficult decisions to make. However, because the task before us is to balance this budget, and because of the fact that we are looking at a shortfall in terms of the projected revenues that we had anticipated, this amendment that's before us right now does not seem too far out of place. I believe it, in essence, is a 1%, 1% reduction in their budget. And so I too, well, as much as I don't want to, would have to support the amendment at this time. We have, the Guam Public School System carries the largest bulk of the general fund revenues in terms of what is being appropriated. And I think that through the, through the media, it's been basically exposed that there are areas in which GPSS could, if they really look, make some cost-cutting, take some cost-cutting measures to make sure that they perhaps even contribute by being a more effective, effectively-run department. So in those terms, a 1% reduction in their appropriation, I do not feel is out of place. So therefore, I do support this amendment as well. Thank you, Mr. Richard.
Senator Isisaki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we've, we've gone through weeks of exercise going through this, and I think the objective is to come up with a balanced budget. And ultimately, I think we need to do better than a balanced budget because we owe way too much money. So shooting for the balanced budget is only the first step. We actually need to get spending below revenues so we can have some hope of paying vendors and paying tax refunds and COLA payments and EITC and, and everything that we owe, putting more money into the retirement fund. These, we're in a terrible hole. You know, our government has, has been spending above revenue for too many years. And if, if all we achieve in this move today is at least arrive at a balanced budget, we're at least going to stop the bleeding. And that's absolutely necessary. You know, I have a passion especially for public safety and for police and corrections officer and firemen out there, and those entities are taking their cuts, drastic cuts. And I worry about our ability to provide a safe and secure community for Guam. So as much as I love our children and I don't want to shortchange the cost of education, running education, if, if the budget is still not balanced at this point, after we've gone through a tremendous exercise of finding ways to increase fees and cut costs everywhere, if this is the last step, I think our people will be resistant to, to looking at raising taxes and borrowing money. I mean, those are the final things that we could do, but I think we've eliminated those options. So I think cutting spending additionally is necessary, and I think a 1% cut out of education, as much as it pains all of us, is necessary, and I support this amendment, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Okay, on the Calvo's amendment, as many as are in favor, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion pass. Okay, on the, any more amendments?
Yeah, I have, it's the same page, Mr. Chair.
Can I have your amendment?
Yeah, it's right up there, it says number two in the, in the front. Appropriations to the Guam Public School System, page two. We're now moving on to the next page. Actually, it says page three, it'll be the...
Let's have a second recess until the chair gets a copy.
Chair, the next amendment I have again is in the page, in the bottom left-hand, it says number three?
Yes.
Okay, and it says add a new section blank to chapter three, and this is section blank, Guam Community College. And again, the same as in the earlier amendments, there's section one appropriations to Guam Community College, so we're going to amend it by reducing the appropriation from $14,601,574 to $15,154,555. And then again, on A, again, the deletion would be $7,316,562 to $7,239,543.
Just a minute. Second recess. Okay, we are entertaining the amendment made by Senator Edi Calvo. I'll want to add a new section to chapter three. So if you look at chapter three, okay, will be, be section four, a new section four. And now will be the Guam Community College. Okay, on the motion made by Senator Calvo, Senator Guthers? Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, again, I object to this amendment. We are cutting Guam Community College. Earlier in our session, the first week in our session, this body voted to restore the 2.5% cut that was, that had been proposed for the Guam Community College in addition to the library. And now we're seeing a cut to the Guam Community College. And it's not just going to be a 1% cut. My understanding is this is going to be a 6% cut. So, Mr. Chairman, again, I want to appeal to my colleagues and ask them, what are we doing to our educational institutions? GCC is owed over $7 million in appropriation funds for this fiscal year in addition to what's still owed to them for last fiscal year. I don't know how they're keeping their doors open. We cannot do this to GCC, to UOG, to the public library, or to KGTF. Thank you very much.
Senator Tina Munia Barnes? On the Calvo's amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I too have very grave concerns regarding this amendment. Just based on our, I guess, our procedural amendments when we were here several weeks ago, and acknowledging that we're on our eighth week here, we did take the opportunity to restore Guam Community College. And if I note, based on the reduction here, I'm understanding it right now as the amendment shows, that they will take the 1% deappropriation plus the automatic 5% deappropriation. And, 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 Mr. Chair, my concern is, is knowing that, 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 I share the same sentiments with my, the previous speaker that spoke into the funds that have, that GCC hasn't been receiving. I, I just have major concerns about, about taking away the funding that's needed to provide the education for our students. And I, I think it's really important that my colleagues reconsider this, so I too will object to this amendment. Thank you.
Senator Respechio?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, I'm Pingo. I think what would be on the Calvo amendment, and what would be very helpful for, for us, regardless of what side of the aisle we find ourselves sitting at, would be to get a total picture of where we're at with Bill 74. We've gone through eight weeks of various versions, and maybe if the chairman can ask a question I haven't, if he would yield, if there's any discussion, whether publicly or privately, to restore the Guam Community College or to exempt them from the 5% automatic deappropriation. And just some background here, Mr. Speaker, all I, all we could do, all I could do is speak to the kind of information that we have at our individual desk and understand totally what the current landscape is. Right now, there was a reporting requirement, which all it seems right now, all the departments and agencies, including the judiciary and the mayor's council, according to the public auditor, did not comply. So that, as a separate process, will experience a 5% deappropriation. And what's being attempted to do here is to distribute $3 million that has yet to be, that would purport to make this budget balanced. And so in the case of Guam Community College, to reduce the appropriation level by 1%, which represents a cut of $77,000, the 5% deappropriation then, Mr. Speaker, would come from a revised appropriation level. So the total impact, unless there's no movement to reinstate or exempt GCC, is $439,000, Mr. Speaker. That's, that's the message I've tried to send in every amendment that's been put before this body, and I was ruled out of order in an attempt to do that. And if you want to do that, that's fine, I just want to try to keep this process as open and transparent as possible. So if the chairman would yield to a question I have, and the question is whether or not there's been discussions publicly or privately to restore GCC's 5% deappropriation. That would be very helpful for us, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Calvo, will you yield to the question?
Yes, I'll yield to the speaker. Yes, I'll yield to the question from the previous speaker. I don't know whether there's been discussions publicly with any individual with this body in regards to the restoration of the 5% deappropriation, in particular to, let's say, GCC. For myself, there has been no official statement made or official coming in from GCC to discuss the issue in regards to the 5% deappropriation.
So, Mr. Speaker, I just want to conclude by saying I don't support the Calvo amendment.
Okay, we have a minute recess. Just, you know, technical change in terms of the, the language of section four under the Guam Community College, the, the direction would be the fir, the first paragraph of, specifically section one and section one A, part three, chapter two of Public Law 28, 149, are hereby specially amended to read. So that would be, would make it perfectly clear that B and C, that are part of the subsection would not be eliminated. Now, okay, on the Calvo's amendment? Okay, we have a minute recess. We are entertaining Senator Edi Calvo to add a new section, section four to chapter three. And now, on the, on the motion, or on the amendment, as many as are in favor of the motion, signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight votes. Okay, motion pass.
Yeah, thank you very...
Okay, Senator Calvo?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, the next amendment I have is, again, outlined in the bottom left-hand by three A, and this to add a new section blank to chapter three. Again, this is Guam Community College, and it signifies by D appropriation to Guam Community College Apprenticeship Program, and to delete $103,940, and to amend it to
On the amendment, is there any discussion or any objection? There's no objection? Motion carries. Next amendment, Senator Calvo?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next amendment I have, again, you'll see on the page in the bottom left-hand side, it says number four. And this one would read amend section blank of chapter four, and this is Department of Public Health and Social Services General Fund Appropriations. First part is section one, where you delete the $50,167,302 with $50,23,844. And then the second part, there is an A to delete $18,425,480 with $18,282,022.
All right, on the motion, Senator Respechio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this would be a good time to ask Mr. De La Rosa a question. And I'm going to try to be as specific as possible. I don't keep wanting to beating a dead horse, it's obviously, I'm... Anyway, this, this amendment, it moved by Senator Calvo, really represents a $1 million cut to the Department of Public Health and Social Services because it reduces the appropriation level, but it also takes into consideration the $921,000, 5% deappropriation impact. Has any attempts, John, been made, whether through these various directors and deputy directors, or even through, you know, the special assistants at the governor's office, to see what kind of impact this would mean to public health? Could you just try to confirm for me if my analysis is correct, that while on the surface, this amendment represents a $143,000 reduction, if you add in the 5% deappropriation, isn't it really a million dollars?
That's correct.
Mr. De La Rosa, how far are you with doing that assessment to whether or not, not the line item impact, because we obviously are doing that? What would the million-dollar impact mean to the Department of Public Health and Social Services? I mean, this is an agency that's supposed to be the front line to a lot of our social problems here in the island. And when they talked about a 2.5% cut, they were, they said that they could absorb this cut through their vacancies or FTEs that have not been filled, but double that impact of a million dollars, what would that represent for public health?
I'm sorry, Senator, we are finalizing that, that breakdown, the summary of the impact on operations versus personnel. I will get it to you, hopefully before today's session ends.
Before we...
However, if, I just want to clarify something again, that the deappropriation is a function of existing law. So we factor it in because it's the reality that we face, that by law, every agency that's violated, every program in this government that's violated the reporting requirements has to be deappropriated, has been deappropriated. So what we are affecting in these amendments are what were the original appropriation levels that these agencies, based on what the AS400 shows their operating requirements, has. And from that, we've, we've prorated the $3.1 million in reductions, which amounts to about 1% for most of the agencies. So specific to this, we're only taking a 1% reduction. The 5% deappropriation is not a function of our bill, except for in the fact that it is something that has to occur based on public, existing public law.
And you said that the administration is working on making these deappropriations, because what, what the Calvo amendment does, it assumes that the administration is going to make all these deappropriations, and based on those assumptions, it recognizes that there's still $3 million that needs to be redistributed. Has the administration moved on deappropriating the, all the noncompliant agencies?
Yes, we're moving on that now.
Are you moving on that? Someone just told me that there was a media report that the letters went... the letters went out by BBMR, notifying those agencies that their budgets shall be deappropriated accordingly. Could we have copies of those letters? Did those letters, in fact, go out, John?
I can confirm if all the letters went out, but I believe the letters started going out earlier this week.
Wouldn't then, it be easier, rather than offering these amendments piecemeal by our chairman here, wouldn't then it be easier to just go and adjust all the vari, appropriation levels from FY 2007, 5%, or in some cases, 6%, or in some, as opposed to relying on a legislative mandate, which I think doing that deappropriation language, and letting the governor now decide, I mean, not decide, but letting him deappropriate those budgets accordingly, maybe the legislature abrogated its responsibility and duty to appropriate and deappropriate. Hence, we have to have amendments moved by Senator Calvo.
You know, I just, we're just complying with the deappropriation provision. However, the appropriation levels reflected in the bill, reflect what the request is to adjust those appropriation levels, based on what was submitted initially in Bill 74. The deappropriation is not an appropriation function of this bill. If we had deappropri, if we had factored that into the line items of these appropriations, we would have then had, by law, then to take an additional 5% off that bottom line, which would have had a larger impact on the agencies, and would not have been, we feel, proper application of that law.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. On the measure, Senator Shimizu.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, Department of Public Health and Social Services, the amount of, amount that we're cutting, you know, it's really dealing with a lot of the, the people who need the safety net. These are the people that, when economic times are really hard, they also get hit even harder. So I oppose the amendment to this measure, reducing public health again. Just like I would have, I've been given the opportunity to speak out on the Guam Community College. You know, the Guam Community College, the people are from, the blue collar workers, you know, the grassroots, these are not, the clientele's are not from, from those who are going on a four-year college institution. As we know, within the next few years, we will be needing, you know, skilled workers, and the skilled workers are coming from the blue collar workers, not necessarily on the white collars. But in addition to that, in terms of our healthcare needs, just like in public health, when we start cutting back on, on healthcare, up at community colleges, like why is the place where there's a, for nursing, LPNs and RNs to be able to, so any reduction, at least in these two areas, in terms of health, safety, and welfare. I've said that since day one, eight weeks ago, that, you know, the priorities that I've set for myself, and I hope to convince the other 14, that it's health, you know, public safety and education, and of course, revenue enhancement. This is not necessarily revenue enhancement, it's revenue dehansment. Here we are, cutting back. While we want to be able to do a cut, a meat cleaver approach, by cutting across the board, Mr. Chairman, we should try to look and keep our promises when we talk about education. We should keep our promises when we talk about healthcare. We should keep our promises when we talk about public safety and revenue enhancement. And this is not revenue enhancement. While I can appreciate the good chair trying to give out a balanced budget, please not at the expense of those who are blue collar workers, the grassroots. Some of us here have been blessed by the dear Lord by giving us an academic degree. We should go back and look at what can we do to help these people. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for your generosity.
Thank you very much. On the motion, all those in favor of the-
Hi, Ed. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I can tell by the look in your face, that we're, we need to be calling people in to-
On the motion-
But add the vote. Thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. The motion carries. Next one, Mr. Calvo. I think the conversation will be advanced simply by just stating the difference in numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next amendment is, states number 5, in the bottom left-hand side, and it's amend sections in Chapter 4 to read, and this is Section 2, Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities. And this first change would be on Section A, to delete $2,643,643,674, to be reduced to $2,615,845. And that's in Section 2.
Okay. On that, motion, Senator Barnes, followed by Senator Guthertz.
I, again, Mr. Chair, would have to stand in opposition to this amendment, as it decreases the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities.
Tina, just, if I could warn you, same thing that I told Senator Guthertz, in this particular case, opposition will actually increase the cut to 2.5%. So if you wish to make an amendment to restore it to 100%, then the proper way to do it would be to amend the amendment, because in this case-
Can I have a 10-second recess, so I can explain that with you?
Sure, come on. We'll take a recess.
Sidhuas Massey, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to proffer my amendment, and copies have been transmitted to all my colleagues, Mr. Chair. This amendment, amend Senator Calvo's Amendment Number 5, as follows, and it says, "Section 2, Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disability, Subsection A, Section 1, Part 2 of Public Law 28, 150, is hereby amended to read." And it says, "A, the sum of $2,643,674 is appropriated from the General Fund to the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disability, for its operations in fiscal year 2007, of which $870,642 is to meet the requirements of the Permanent Injunction in Civil Case Number CV 01-00041, comma JC et al. versus the government of Guam et al." Again, Mr. Chair, I promise to make the short, Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities continues to be the one-stop center for all persons with disabilities, whether it be for the vocational rehabilitation, networking with other nonprofit organizations for disabilities, support service, and what have you. It is crucial that this funding be kept to support that mission. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity to make that amendment.
Senator Guthertz, you're recognized. You're welcome, Senator Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased that my colleague from Maynila was making this amendment. Just very briefly, everyone should be reminded that this agency is under, or is a party to the current federal litigation, and is under court order to meet certain federal standards for the folks that fall under their purview. And without talking to the agency itself, and them not being here, I really am not comfortable in supporting this amendment, the original amendment, Senator Calvo, because I do not know how it will affect this agency, and its ability to comply with the federal court order. Remember, ladies and gentlemen, Department of Mental Health, DISIT, are under federal watch, and have already been cited in court for failing to meet certain requirements, which we basically require retrofitting facilities, making sure their programs are accessible to their clients, making sure individuals are not placed at the Department of Corrections, that should be placed at mental health, and who should be receiving services through DISIT. So, I'm very concerned about this original amendment, and I support Senator Barnes' amendment. Thank you.
Yeah, again, just a point of clarification.
Actually, it's a point of information.
Point of information. And just, just for purpose of information to the body, the, there's no impact, this 870,642 is intact, to meet the requirements of the permanent injunction. So, obviously, there has been, even though there has been a reduction, again, this dollar amount of 870,642 is not changed.
Okay. Senator Shumuzu, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I have to stand up and be counted, and support Senator Munia Barnes' amendment, to get back the original budget, even if it's only 1%. You know, Mr. Speaker, I honestly believe that, you know, a community, a society is judged by how we take care of our least fortunate people who have circumstances in their lives that makes things much more difficult for them, and there are things that we take for granted, the blessings of the dear Lord, that it gives us good health, and with no disability, at least none that I see in this hall. But I would like us to consider seriously that we do not reduce the budget of DISIT, because of they represent the individuals with disabilities, Mr. Speaker. I am sure we can find, you know, other ways of addressing the shortfall, but, you know, not, not at the expense of our citizens, who maybe by no choice, or of their own, but victims of disabilities. You know, please consider that, you know, one day, we may be walking in their shoes, and they, we would be able to say, you know, well, we needed to count the monies, to be able to get a balanced budget, we should also look at some of the people who are in need, much more than maybe some of the ordinary citizens. So find it in your heart, please, and vote for Tina Munna Barnes. Vote for our least fortunate people who have disabilities. And I guarantee you, if you look within your own friends and relatives, you will see people that may be close to you with disabilities. And when you look at them, you will say, I voted for Tina Munna Barnes to reinstate the budget back, so that you can have a better life. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
But as a point of information, I just wish you guys be aware that we are talking about a $38,000 difference between these two numbers. It's not that big. On the motion, you object? We're not dealing with the 5% right now. You can move Senator Espishio to restore that when we get to it. Yeah, you are objecting to it? Okay, so there is objection. All those in favor, yeah, I'm going to, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That's one, one, two, three, four votes. Motion fails. We're going to take a, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Do you have mental health and substance abuse? I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, the next sec amendment states Section 3, Department-
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. We only voted on hers. We did not vote yet on your main motion. She's right. On the main motion, all those in favor, please signify. Nina, I can't keep doing this. We're going to take a 30-second recess. Senator Calvo, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion carries. On the next section, Senator Calvo. And Senator Calvo, in the interest of time, if you could, I think we can all read, so just simply tell us what number change is, and leave it at that, okay?
Okay, thank you. The next one, Section 3, and the number change is delete $4,400-
Amend.
Amend-
$4,491,883.
There you go, and to be replaced to $4,444,598.
On that motion, are you supplying us with information?
Yes, I am. I'm trying to find what page. You guys went too fast.
No, that's asking, that's not supplying.
Okay, point of questioning?
No, 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 no.
Number 5, okay. Thank you. Is that, is that the mental health? Are we talking of mental health?
Yes, we are.
Oh, my Lord.
Okay, on the motion, Senator Shumuzu, you're recognized.
Will the author yield? How much is, are we talking about, in terms of your amendment will be deducted from the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse? No, just, the percentage, I understand, was 1, but how much are we talking about?
It's roughly about 1%.
But, but in dollars, would be about what?
I'll yield to the question of the author. Obviously, it's a little bit over $40,000.
Are you, are the author, who's the author?
I mean, the previous speaker.
All right. Can we, can we do this in some kind of reasonable order? Senator Shumuzu, you have a question?
Yes, I do. I'm asking the mover of the amendment to provide me just information in terms of dollars, not necessarily by percent, if I can. How much would that be?
Senator Calvo, do you yield to the question, what is the dollar variance between the two figures?
Yeah, again, Senator, without my abacus around, it's a little bit over 40-some-thousand, 40-some-thousand dollars, which is roughly 1% of the budget for mental health and-
All right, stop talking percentages, that's not what he asked. Forty, it's actually about $47,000, by my quick math. $47,000.
Well, okay, so just for this-
Does it answer your question, Senator Shumuzu?
Yes, it answers my question. Forty-seven thousand, 285, more or less. I wondered what, if maybe the representative of the, of the administration can tell us, with the $47,000, I mean, what part, and where, how would that impact in the overall scheme of things, in terms of what-
Could I supply a point of information?
Yes, please.
I just want to point out that-
Yes.
-Mental Health did come and testify earlier-
Okay, okay.
-for a 2.5% cut.
Yes.
So-
Okay, so what you're saying is that, at the time, we had the 2.5, they, they kind of said, we'll take the cut, like everybody else, you know, that's-
Yeah, so this is $47,000.
And so, this is $47,000. I tell you, you know, $47,000 can go a long way, in terms of $47,000 worth of pharmacutic, pharmaceutical drugs. And if, at some point in time, that you need those kinds of medicine, you know, and again, it's a disability, this time we're talking about mental health and substance abuse, how, you know, how can we always, again, you know, make the least, I mean, why do we touch this? This is health. Why, again, you know, even for 40, for some people, you know, $47,000 is not a lot of money, because maybe we have deep pockets, and we can go to the private psychiatrist, and we get a, but you know, in mental health, the clientele's, the people that we serve, saying, "Difna, come down and help us on this." Suss mareo se. You know, I know that each and every one of us have family members and friends, you know. I beg you to again, stop hurting the most vulnerable of vulnerable- to again stop hurting the most vulnerable or vulnerable people in Guam.
Okay, Senator Shimizu.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I hope you vote my way. Thank you.
I don't know which way you want me to vote, Senator Shimizu. If I vote against this motion, the cut is two-point-five percent. If you wish to propose to restore, then as Senator Barnes did and Senator Guthertz did, you need to propose an amendment to restore.
To restore, but on, on, on Calvo's amendment, I'm talking against it. I'm not yet, I'm, I'm just hoping to be-
The point I'm trying to make is that if you vote against Calvo's amendment, the cut is worse.
What's that?
The cut is worse if you vote against Calvo's amendment because the status quo right now in Bill Seventy-four is a larger cut on mental health. Do you see what I'm saying?
Again, you know, at-
So, just like Senator Barnes, Senator Shimizu.
Five percent that ultimately at the end, you know, I just hope, just to busta mi mapatad, I, I just want to speak out my piece.
I understand, Sir-
Try to touch your hearts and your minds. Thank you.
Senator Shimizu.
No, I wanted to speak and, uh, that's all. Thank you.
I just don't understand what you're arguing against. If you want the cut not, to not be severe, then move to restore. That's what I'm saying. If that's what you want.
But you want it in writing, so I, I could take a-
You know, we've had that amendment two or three times. If you just do it longhand, I, it'll work.
We have it and I can take a one minute?
Certainly.
Thanks, Suss mareo se.
A point of information too, Senator Shimizu, before we recess. I think John has some information about where mental health gets its pharmaceuticals from. He'd like to provide it to you.
Yeah, thank you, Senator Shimizu. Just to update you, the governor, in this year alone, has earmarked some six hundred thousand dollars from compact funding to mental health for pharmaceuticals.
So, they'll be okay?
Yeah, there's federal money that's being sent for pharmaceuticals.
Better than the forty thousand that's being reduced in their appropriation.
But, uh, at the risk again, you know, I'm just concerned about that lingering five percent, you know?
Well, we'll get there.
We'll get there. Thank you.
Make any motion you want.
Thank you very much. No need then. John assured me that the governor's on the way with six hundred thousand dollars for compact impact. Thank you very much.
Very well. Uh, we'll take the one-minute recess. The Senator Shimizu can put his amendment together.
Speaker, I will withdraw my amendment because the good gentleman from the front office has assured us six hundred thousand dollars. Thank you very much, John.
Okay. So, the amendment is being withdrawn on the information provided by Mr. De La Rosa. The six hundred thousand dollars in compact impact money is going to be earmarked to mental health and substance abuse for the purposes of purchasing pharmaceuticals. Is there any objection to Senator Shimizu withdrawing? There being none, you may withdraw. Uh, any further discussion on the main motion? There being none, all those in, is there an objection in the main motion? There being none, the motion carries. Senator Calvo, although we have a, uh, Section Five here dealing with GMH, I understand you wish to not move on that. Is that true? All right, so, any of the cuts that are, uh, in this bill that talk about GMH are not being moved, so the current status quo in Seventy-four on GMH remains the same. Which brings us to the Guam Police Department. On the Guam Police Department, Senator Calvo.
Yes, again, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Again, Section Seven, Guam Police Department. Again, we'd like to amend on Section One A, Part One, Chapter Three of Public Law Twenty-eight dash one five zero. And of course, amending the twenty-two million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollar figure to twenty-two million- twenty-two million, one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Okay, on that motion, is there any discussion? Senator Shimizu, followed by Senator Guthertz.
Again, uh, will the author yield? How much is this again, in dollars and cents? You know, I, I say that so that at least the public will be aware, rather than just one percent.
We'll take a one-minute recess so that since the, uh, since the author is going to be asked that question, so they have a calculator in front of them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Question? Okay, uh, Senator, we, we, we finished Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse at Section Three? And then Section Five? What is this, uh? GMH Authority, uh, Operation Appropriation?
You know what, uh, Mr. Chair? I would, I, I'm requesting if I can withdraw this amendment at this point in time to address an amendment that, uh, Senator Frank Blas wishes to make?
Okay, uh, I don't, you know, the motion is to withdraw the amendment on Section Five of Senator Calvo's amendment. Any objection? Without objection, so ordered. Senator, uh, Blas?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, uh, in front of everybody, and you should have one, Mr. Chair. Uh, it's handwritten. Okay, I'd like to make a mo- motion to amend Section Three of Section Five of Chapter Four. Basically, to read Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Operations Appropriation. The sum of, and I'm just gonna go, three million, six hundred and one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars is appropriated from the General Fund to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority for its operations in fiscal year two thousand and seven. Just for the, uh, for the, for the body's knowledge, based on this, if we, we go through this, this is a one percent reduction as opposed to if we went back to the original, the Bill Seventy-four. Bill Seventy-four had a two-and-a-half percent re- reduction. This, in essence, restores about six, fifty-seven thousand dollars back into GMH appropriations.
Okay, on the, uh, Blas amendment?
If, if we go the original, Bill Seventy-four, Bill Seventy-four has it at three million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine seventy-seven. Here, it's got three million, six hundred, one. It's an increase. It's an increase in the budget.
Senator Wumpet, on the Blas amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mi- Mr. Chairman, let me see if I can make sure you understand this correctly. I know that it was, uh, it was at two, two-point-five. That was the original, deduction at the time. And, uh, but what this would do now, you're saying, is that it's a one percent then? It'll be one, if so, in, in essence, the reduction only be one-point-five percent because it's going up by one percent. Is that correct?
Will you yield to that question, Senator Blas?
The, the total reduction will be about one percent, so it'll be, he's, he's adding back in one-point-five percent.
Oh, oh, because I thought I heard him said one percent. That's why I'm trying to, to get that clear. So, the original was two-point-five, and now he's going to restore-
His amendment will restore one-point-five back.
To restore one-point-five, so then in essence, the only, uh, reduction then will be?
One percent.
One percent.
Around one percent, yes.
This does not, uh, include the, uh, automatic mandated five percent also? They've been exempted from-
These are working on the actual appropriations that will be assigned to them, by law.
From, from what it is for oh-seven?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sen- Senator Shimizu, on the Blas amendment?
On the Blas amendment? You withdrew your amendment? And-
Senator Shimizu?
Is it, yeah, yes, uh, uh, Mr., Mr. Chairman, again, like in the past, how much is the cut? In dollars and cents?
Senator Shimizu, were you missing?
No, I'm sorry. So, he was withdrawn? This is restoring it back, but no one percent cut at all from the hospital? I mean, that's what I asked you. How much is the cut in dollars and cents?
Okay, Senator, um, Mr. De La Rosa?
It is not a reduction from what, it is actually a restoration from the original proposed appropriation level in Bill Seventy-four.
Okay, so, we're, we're going back and restoring it to its full glory as it was presented earlier?
No, we're restoring one-point-five percent of the original two-point-five percent reduction. Correct.
But there's still a cut?
From the original appropriation to the hospital, uh, in Bill, in Public Law Twenty-eight, one forty-nine, the cut amounts to thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars.
Thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars.
Again, John, I'll ask you, you know, uh, uh, for me, the sacred cow in all of this budget I mentioned earlier, you know?
Senator Shimizu, uh, on the Blas amendment?
Yeah, I'm talking on the Blas amendment. I'm laying the foundation, Mr. Speaker. If you don't mind.
You've got short time for laying the foundation, yeah.
Is there, is there a possibility to, that, uh, I can do that? Thank you very much. Nobody knows, seriously. Thank you, uh, uh, Speaker, on Pico, but I, I, I mentioned that that has been a, a sacred cow because I think every penny that we can get into this hospital is like a blood infusion, transfusion. We need, they need the money, every penny. You know, and if there is going to be a sacred cow, I think the hospital should be. And then they should also clean up their, their finances up there, but, you know, right now, I, I, again, I'm gonna ask, uh, uh, our colleagues, uh, on, on, on the, on the Blas amendments, it, it restores back at least one percent? Okay, but if we can go back to, um, you know, to, yeah. You only one-point-five, you restore one-point-five, so there's still one percent, right, which amounts to about thirty-eight million, I mean, thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
You can cover that, no, on the, uh, on the, um, monies that's coming from the compact impact?
I, I believe for this year, six million dollars has already been earmarked to the hospital.
Good. I, I just want to make it nice sure that, uh, that the hospital is on strong foundation. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, on the Blas amendment, any objection? Okay, without objections, so ordered. Okay, uh, on the Guam Police Department, uh, Senator Calvo?
Yes, again, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, again, my amendment is to, to delete from the Guam Police Department budget twenty-two million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six, and to replace that with twenty-two million, one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven.
Okay, on that motion, Senator Guthertz. And Senator Wumpet next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen and ladies, uh, colleagues, we, we do have an amendment I'm offering. You all have coffee, copies of it. Basically, the amendment says, Section Seven, Guam Police Department, Section One A, Part One, Chapter Three of Public Law Twenty-eight, one fifty, is hereby amended to read Section One, Guam Police Department. The sum of twenty-two million, three hundred, forty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars-
Senator Guthertz, uh, can you hold one for a second? Let me, uh, get my copy. You're not going to speak?
Amendment was passed out. Just have to insert my name. Just insert JG.
Okay, Senator Guthertz, so, you're recognized.
Thank you. Anyway, the amendment states that the sum of, uh, twenty-two million, three hundred, forty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty, um, eighty-six dollars is appropriated from the General Fund of the Guam Police Department for its operations fiscal year two thousand and seven and for the implementation of Public Law Twenty-three, one-one-five relative to permitting the Guam Police Department officers to use their personal vehicles for official purposes. Uh, Mr. Chairman, as you can see, this is a, uh, full restoration amendment for the Guam Police Department budget. As a former Director of Public Safety and the first Acting Chief of the Guam Police Department, I would have a very difficult time facing the police officers and the support civilian personnel at GPD. In addition, of course, I do love men in uniform. And, uh, I don't want to make them mad at me, Mr. Chairman, but really, the Police Department is, you know, the Police Department has worked very hard, uh, and of course, we have leaders, former leaders of the Police Department here with us today, former officers of the Police Department. The Police Department is very well represented in this legislature with Senator Tenorio, former GPD officer, with, uh, Senator Palacios, a former, uh, police, uh, GPD and DPS high-ranking officer, and of course, Senator Frank Blas, a former GPD officer and DPS officer, and also our former DPS officer and former, uh, uh, GPD chief sitting right next to me, as well as myself. They need their funds. This, this island is going through a period of great concern over recent criminal incidents, burglaries, thefts, uh, physical assaults, uh, resulting in deaths, uh, vehicular accidents resulting in deaths. Uh, we also have seen of late, uh, uh, an increase in drug activity. Our community cannot be left unprotected, Mr. Chairman. That is the reason for this amendment. Aside from the fact, the, uh, fact, the officers look great in uniforms. Thank you.
Senator Wumpet, on the, uh, on the Guthertz amendment?
Oh, okay, well, uh, th- thank you, Mr. Chairman. What, I, I want to make sure that, that I'm seeing this correctly then. The attachment that originally, was being proffered by Senator Calvo was at twenty-two, one-one-one, seven-four-seven, right? Am I correct? And then now what Senator Guthertz then would be doing is, in essence, then actually increasing it by an additional twenty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-six, that, twenty-two million, rather, three hundred and forty-six, nine eighty-six. And that, am I correct then, Mr. Chairman, that, um, that is also an increase from what was in the draft, uh, bill?
Would somebody yield to that question? Have you done?
I'm sorry, the, uh, the, um, amount of twenty-two, three, forty-six, nine eighty-six is actually what is the current appropriation level in Public Law Twenty-eight, one fifty?
Okay, so, so the twenty-two point three is the current? That's correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm trying to get my bearings here because I'm looking at a draft that says twenty-one point seven, and then the amendment by Calvo is twenty-two point one, and the amendment by Senator Guthertz is twenty-two point three, which is basically, I guess, then to, to restore it to what it currently is. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, just, of course, briefly, just actually scanning through some of the, uh, calculations in terms of what the revenues that would be raised, what the differences are, and based on all the fees and everything. And, and we're in the position that we've always, basically, this legislature has taken, is that the three areas that we consider to be a priority will be health, education, and public safety, and then an additional area would be, rev and tax to, who actually are involved in generating the revenues for the government. And, and I have to, to agree with the, the Senator who proffered this amendment primarily because and I don't know if, if any one of you are, are starting to see the connection that when the economy, of course, is, is down, that means the, the people are, are having to, to pinch, uh, you know, pennies and to make ends meet. And when that starts to happen, then you see a correlation of, uh, an increase in crime. And then as a result of that, we do not want to have a, a police force that would not have the, the equipment, the supplies, the materials, uh, you know, to be able then to function. What is the sense of having our officers out in the street if they don't have, you know, their tools, their equipment? And I think, if anything, those are the three areas that, that our community would be concerned about and would want this body to, to support. And, and I think that by not supporting public safety, then, then we're going to technically be a part of, of some of the problems that would be occurring here in the island. And I really hope my colleagues will really think about this. Uh, as much as we like to restore everyone, I think that when we come to a common ground, and one is, uh, safety of the citizens, the community, that, uh, they would want to, to support this. So, I encourage everyone is to please support, uh, the restoration of, uh, GPD's, uh, budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, on the Guth- Guthertz amendment, Senator Munia Barnes?
Sisu ismaasi, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, I too rise in full support and, uh, literally applaud the uh, author for taking the time to proffer this amendment. And I say that, Mr. Speaker, because as we look at- the importance of health, education, and safety, and we continuing to make it a priority, it's important to realize that the officers out there continue to provide a twenty-four-seven, um, man-hours to protect the community at large. And, and when we, we talk about our island and the nineteen villages and, and, and what happens with, with, with the, um, situations that we have on hand, based on, on the recent, uh, media reports, i- it's important that we realize that we give the tools, um, to the Guam Police Department and adhere to the priorities that we've committed to. I'm also concerned, Mr. Chair, that this, this amendment, uh, though I support it, still is, is a very big concern of me because if I look at the way we've worked, um, and, and working with the public law that we have on hand today, we're still probably looking at a one-point-one, uh, million-dollar shortfall. And I, I'm, I'm just gonna have to say that, that the commitment that I made to the community is knowing that, that when it comes to safety, we have to provide the financial assistance so that they have the necessary tools. So, Mr. Chair, I, I, I'm gonna support this amendment and, and, um, know that I still believe, uh, when the Chair, when the Chief of Police was here several weeks ago, and we asked if he could live within the means of the two-point-five percent cut, he said there was no possible way. And I bring that to the forefront because when, when asked of the administration, were, were some of these directors or were some of these agencies notified about these automatic cuts or these cuts that were gonna appear? Um, some of them said they couldn't live within that cut. So I need to bring it to the forefront. I need my colleagues to, to, to remember and know that these are the men and women who protect our community, that they need that financial assistance. So I support, uh, and thank you, Senator Guthers, for proffering this amendment.
Senator Respecho, on the Guthers amendment.
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I, I, I want to say right away that I support, uh, the amendment. And what, um, this amendment is attempting to do is to prevent the Guam Police Department from experiencing a two-hundred-thirty-five-thousand-dollar reduction in their appropriation level. But it, it just, uh, not even begins to scratch the, uh, surface of what, uh, GPD is facing. They're also facing, uh, an additional one-point-one million dollars. So there's no attempt, uh, later on in this process to restore them, uh, their deappropriation. So essentially, GP, GPD will be facing a one-point-three-million-dollar cut. And I continue to ask the administration's representative, uh, if they've quantified, not, not bottom-line number, Mr. Speaker, but, but if they could just give the legislature an idea of what this, um, one-point-three-million-dollar, uh, impact would mean to, um, Guam Police Department. We know what a two-and-a-half percent cut would mean. Uh, now, this is a, um, a, uh, one percent cut and then an additional five percent from the revised appropriation level. And it's very, it's, it's, it concerns me, Mr. Chairman, because for the last eight weeks, um, there's been, uh, comments made that the priority areas will be health, education, and public safety. And to simply, uh, say that because, uh, agencies didn't comply with the reporting requirement, they're subjected to a five percent, uh, deappropriation. You know, I wanna say that that Acting Chief of Police, in this case, cost the Guam Police Department one million, one hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars. And that impact to the community is gonna be astronomical. And in, and at this point, um, that's, that, that's my biggest concern with doing this, uh...
Are you Senator Respecho, are you talking on the Guthers amendment?
Yes, I am, I'm supporting Guthers', Senator Guthers' amendment, but I'm asking...
No, it doesn't sound like you.
Yeah, it did, right?
Yes, well...
You agree, right, I was, it's...
No, but it doesn't sound like you're supporting the Guthers amendment. This is the original, uh...
Yeah, to restore the original funding level. But I'm, I'm, I'm trying to ask the administration because GPD is still subjected to a, uh, five percent automatic, um, deappropriation. So Senator Guthers' amendment, I support it. Uh, I want a commander for doing it, but it doesn't even begin to, um, scratch the surface of what, uh, this legislature needs to address.
Would you like to hear it, Senator?
Just generally speaking, Senator Respecho, of the, uh, safety agencies, the Guam Police Department, even given the reductions in calculating the deappropriation, is in the, is in the best fiscal shape to actually, uh, finish the year at normal operations. We're still running, like I said, the report on all the agencies that we have information on, but...
What do you consider normal operations to be? Because at a two-and-a-half percent cut, uh, Acting Chief, Acting Chief Stupus said on a scale of one to ten, the delivery of his services at a five, so...
At current operations, let me correct myself.
So it's, it's at a five? And so if we don't support the Guthers amendment, then we're gonna go to a four, maybe a three? Uh, because of the automatic, uh, subsequent automatic, uh, deappropriation, we'll go to a two, maybe a one? That, that, that's my, my concern, Mr. Chairman, I support the Guthers amendment.
Okay, on the Guthers amendment, Senator Ray Tenorio.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, we're all in a very awkward and very uncomfortable position here with respect to many of these issues. Uh, the Chairman of the Office of Finance and Budget and the people who've been working diligently to try to see where they can make up the budgetary shortfalls has put us all in a very, um, difficult position, where we don't want to be and we don't, um, we don't relish the idea of doing. And making cuts to the agencies, which are the priority of the services of this government, are the lion's share of the personnel doing work in this government right now. The Guam Police Department, the Guam Fire DOC, are those agencies which I included in a, um, provision yesterday to allow the Governor to be able to move monies to because of the very important nature of the work that they do. Um, I am rising in a, in a position of support of this amendment, in principle, but also in reality because of the fact that it will actually have a detrimental impact on this agency. And that is straight from the words of the Chief, um, as per a telephone call I made a few minutes ago. And, Mr. Chairman, I know that we are here to try to make the difficult decisions, and I understand the awkwardness of this. And I know the precariousness of the, um, realities that face the financial, um, institution of this government. But I can in good conscience, um, simply allow the cut at this time, at this two-hundred-thirty-five-thousand dollars, with the reality that it may actually compromise significantly the public safety of our, our citizens. And where this government has to make decisions with respect to shortfalls, we, we need to, we need to, as much as possible, try to soften the blow to those areas where my colleagues and I are all in support that these, these areas need to be, um, cut. But, um, I, I, I do rise in the, uh, point of support for the gentle lady from Mingalos amendment, and I, and I, um, and I, and I will support this amendment, thank you.
Senator, Senator Simisaw.
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, you know, I rise to support, um, the Guthers, Senator Guthers amendment. You know, again, let me say, since day one, eight weeks ago, I said, health, public safety, education, and revenue enhancement. Mr. Speaker, today, look at the front page of the PDN. Report warns Guam CNMI. You know, Mr. Speaker, again, public safety is so important, not only on a local level, but on a global level. I go to page, uh, two. Guam CNMI, terrorist threat. For those who didn't have time to meet, to read the, uh, article, I'm not gonna do so, but I can just go on portions here. Major potential, major threat potential. Threats and vulnerability, territorially hindered, border patrol, smuggling drugs and illegal aliens, underworld connections, terror threats, transnational crime organization, critical vulnerability, money laundering, and so forth and so forth. And we are here, you know, to try to give our men and women in the law enforcement all the resources that we can to be able to protect us, not only Guam, but to protect our borders, the region, and of course, our country. To do otherwise by cutting their budget will be foolhardy. We are cutting our own personal safety. We have here, in our home bodies, many who have worn the, the badge and the... And have gone out, they know what it would take to serve and protect against very well-financed people that would otherwise try to topple our democracy. You know, if I may implore, earlier I implored Saint Difna. I implore now Saint Michael, that guardian saint of the men in blue. Because every day they put their life on the line. And I say to the leadership, "Come and say, 'I need every penny to arm our men and women who go out there day in and day out.'" But again, just look at the newspaper, you don't have to go very far. Public safety is so important because if we don't have public safety, you can just about forget democracy. Our men and women in the Police Department are not only dealing with petty theft, they're dealing with highly sophisticated people, and they need every penny. To not support the Guthers amendment is not to support our men and women who serve us. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
You're right on time. Senator Calvo.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Again, Mr. Chair, uh, I do really, I understand the amendment that was been placed forth by, put forth by Senator Guthers. And again, you've heard many voices of previous speakers speaking in behalf of public safety and the need to fully fund public safety. I share that belief. Again, when this proposal has been brought forth by the administration to this body, these, these proposals, which I'm moving forward for, as amendments and for deliberation of the body, it's a full understanding that we are in a financial crisis. And with this financial crisis, there is a need to reduce government spending to a level that is at least even with what we anticipate revenues coming into the government of Guam. And if you can all recall, based on current revenue projections, based on spending authority of this government, uh, there has been a tremendous imbalance. If we weren't to make any changes in the budget, we are, again, that statement was made, we're about thirty million dollars in balance. Now, the administration has come to us with proposals. Proposals for revenue enhancements, proposals, in one hand, to increase revenues to provide better services to the people of Guam. But even with that, a necessity to cut in order to balance the budget. Even with the deappropriations at five percent, which are automatic, again, there is still an imbalance, an imbalance of, of, of over five million dollars. Again, the administration has proposed a way out of it. Part of it, of course, is the use of, of deappropriated special funds. And of course, the other part, which is what we are deliberating right now, that three-point-one-million-dollar imbalance spread over every agency. My dear colleagues, we can't look at every agency, one agency at a time, and say, "We cannot afford to lower one dollar this agency, one dollar that agency." And then when we look at the whole picture, there is an imbalance of, of millions and millions of dollars. Over the past several terms, this legislature in the twenty-eighth has made major moves to re-prioritize budgets to put a greater percentage of appropriations in the priority services of education, public health, and public safety. But if you take a look, if you take a look at what percentage public safety, public health, and public education amounts to the total government of Guam budget, you're looking at about seventy-seven percent of total government of Guam budgets go into these priority areas. And I wish I could have the same wish as all of you. If we could reduce, if we could give back every dollar to the priority areas of public safety, public health, and public education, if there was a way that administration and this body could find a way, I would be the first to jump in the bandwagon. But if we are to give every dollar back of appropriative authority to every one of these public, uh, priorities and every one of these agencies that we'd like to see, I'd like to see, then what that would amount to those agencies that are not in education or not public safety or public health would equate to an average of about twen- a little bit over twenty percent reduction in their budget. And since we are already more than halfway into the fiscal year, that would equate to a cut of over forty-some percent to these other agencies in their budgets. Now, my dear colleagues, I know these are very difficult times. But if we're gonna reduce the budget, if this is the direction the body would like to do, then what you're talking is a wholesale mass extinction of other agencies that are not considered a part of the priority areas. And as these amendments are moved forward, again, I'm, I'm, I'm requesting the body that if there is, and if there is a movement to put additional dollars back in, then please, come up with a solution that could solve the imbalance that is been a part, that is currently, uh, a result if you pass these amendments. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Senator Blas, on the Guthers amendment.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, the author of this amendment, a good senator from Mingalos, he's quite right, you know, I, I did come from law enforcement, and, um, it's still in my blood, you know? And good senator from Malalo, where it, you know, also spoke about, you know, the, uh, constant threat that we have on the island with regards to terrorism. But I also know that over the last few weeks, we've been sitting in these halls because we all, one thing that we all acknowledge, we don't have money. You know? And through the last few weeks, as we were trying to figure out where, how much money we do have, how much money we can get, you know, I've heard in from a, a number of my colleagues say, "We can't take the money away, anyone want money away from the people, from the community." I've also heard colleagues say, "We need to cut expenses of the government." And yes, as a body, we've deliberated, we argued, but we finally came to some consensus as to what revenue figures, how we were able to raise the additional revenues that we're gonna need. But it's still not enough. We just don't have the money. Knowing that we're still short, now we're going to move to restore? Restore what? You know, Mr. Chair, I may be out of order here, but maybe we should proffer an amendment, um, or, or motion, that if you're gonna make amendment to restore, you should also put in your, in, in your motion, where are you gonna get the money? What agency are you gonna get the money from? What services are you gonna cut more? Because we don't have money. I'd love to be able to restore it as well. As a matter of fact, I'd love to give them more. And quite honestly, over the last few weeks, every member of this body had a, the opportunity... And quite honestly, over the last few weeks, every member of this body had a, the opportunity to provide revenue enhancement activities. But because of one political thing or another, we decided we didn't want to. Now, we're going to pit each other, because now we're going to say that we don't support agencies. I'm not going to sit here and I'm not going to vote for for appropriation or to restore appropriation that I know we're not going to be able to meet. So, Mister Chair, I don't know if I'm, if I'm going to be out of order, if I can make that motion. That if you're going to make a motion to restore funding, you put in your motion where you're going to find that funding.
You're not in order.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, on the Guthert's Amendment, Senator Palacios.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, indeed, there's no denying, twenty years of my life, I spent in the police department. I have a son who is then the police department, so I understand. I heard the testimony of the acting chief of police, I think, two weeks ago, that he told us he can live within the cut of twenty-five percent. Tonight, I have good news for him, he's lucky, he only have one percent to cope with. You know, I challenge any member of this body to tell me which agency to unload the one percent proposed for cut on GPD. And then, I challenge that whoever that person is, draft legislation or draft an amendment and delete that agency. It's not, this is a matter of fairness, a matter of principle. Every agency that is now in existence is presumed to be important. Otherwise, let's get it out. And as much as I don't want to cut any agency, once you start cut, then you're just going to have to apply it. Definitely, there's some degree of urgency here and importance. But unless the chief of police comes here before us tonight to tell us that he cannot live with the one percent cut, then I support the one percent cut. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Okay, on the Guthert's Amendment, any more speaker? Senator Guthert's, your last speaker on your amendment.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. I appreciate all of the comments with my colleagues. I know everyone in this room is very, very sincere in wanting to do the right thing. And as Senator Calvo said, yes, we have this dilemma of trying to balance the budget. However, Mister Chairman, it's very hard for me, and all conscious, to attempt to balance the budget when it will mean prejudicing the safety of our people, the education of our people, and the health of our people. I'm a little amazed as the previous legislature before this one made a strong public statement that no matter what, no matter what the priority will be, public safety, health, and education. Tonight, we're sort of at the crossroads with this legislature. We are pressured because of the deterioration in Guam's financial circumstances, which have impacted the ability of our government to operate. But at the same time, Mister Chairman, if a citizen of Guam becomes a victim of a crime and faces the potentiality of death because of a lack of adequately funded emergency services provided by the police, by the fire department, by our hospital, then how can we look our people in the eye? Yes, let us balance the budget, but not when it's going to mean prejudicing the public safety, the health, and the education of our people. Thank you very much.
On the Guthert's Amendment, as many as are in fear, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Please, please put your hands up, okay? And now, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion pass. Okay. We're now, let me see, we're on section eight, right? Guam Fire Department, Senator Calvo.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you very much, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, again, my next amendment, again, as proposed by the administration on Guam Fire Department. And this is to reduce, delete the number twenty-one million ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy to twenty million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Okay, on the motion, Senator Guthert's, then Senator Munia Barnes.
Mister Chairman, I have a motion. And my motion is as follows. Section eight Guam Fire Department subsection A, section one, part two, chapter three of Public Law twenty-eight dash one fifty is hereby amended to read the sum of twenty-one million ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars is appropriated from the general fund to the Guam Fire Department for its operations in fiscal year two thousand and seven. Just like the previous amendment I proffered for the Guam Police Department, this amendment would restore the budget of the Guam Fire Department. Mister Chairman, yesterday, we had a near tragedy on our island. Some of you may have heard about this. A father and son almost died in waters off Epan. There were no emergency equipment available. The Guam Fire Department was not available to respond to this emergency quickly. A private citizen and his son-in-law and another employee at a very popular restaurant establishment in Epan were informed about the terrible situation facing this father and son in the waters. And upon his own initiative, Mister Jeff Pleadwell marshaled his own boat and went out to rescue these people. Mister Pleadwell was asked why he did not just simply contact nine-one-one and wait for the fire department to respond, the rescue unit. Mister Pleadwell said, because by then it would be too late. This man and his son would have been dead. Because it would take from twenty to thirty minutes for the fire department to come with the jet skis, which are housed in Tijin, to be able to respond to this particular situation. If our fire department is not available, particularly in the south, for rescues, water rescues, how much more would the proposed cut to their budget affect their ability to help our people in times of emergency? Again, just like with the police department, with the hospital, and yes, even our educational institutions. When it comes to public safety, Mister Chairman, you cannot have an austerity program. You have to make sure the human resources in these agencies, which are labor-intensive, are available at a moment's notice in order to save lives. So I offer this amendment to restore the fire department's budget to its original level. Thank you.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Sidoos mahsi talu, Mister Chair, for giving me the opportunity to rise in support of Senator Guthert's amendment. But I do have a question for the administration just based on the presentation that was said several weeks ago. And I just want to get a clarification from Mister De La Rosa or the administration.
Do we have Senator, Mister De La Rosa from the administration here? Can you, we'll take a second recess. You refer, uh, phrase your question again, directly, and direct that question to him regarding, and to Senator Guthert's, so.
Amendment.
Amendment.
Sidoos mahsi talu, Mister Chair. Thank you, Mister De La Rosa. I'm just wondering, based on presentations that was done most recently, what is the number, the percentage of the personnel category, the total percentage of the Guam Fire Department's budget for personnel? What percentage are we at?
I believe based on current operating levels, it's about ninety-eight percent of the general fund.
Ninety percent or ninety?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight percent. Mister Chair, this, 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 this really brings some concern to me and why I support the amendment of Senator Guthert's. Mister De La Rosa, we just increased the fees based on the presentation that Guam Fire Department had here, am I right?
Yes.
And with that increase of service, it was noted that the department will provide the needed services to the community, am I right?
Yes.
And the upgraded services when it comes to the ambulances and the other mission mandates that they have in front of them, am I right?
The fees were designed to cover the cost of the services currently being provided, yes.
So, so I guess my question would be is that if we cut, continue to cut the department based on the presentation that they received, that they presented before us, how are they, or what will the effects be if these cuts were to happen?
I'm not sure. Do you mean, will it affect their operations? Senator, we're at a juncture in this process, in the, at this late time in the year, that absolutely every agency in this government of Guam's operational capacities will be affected. So, yes, the Guam Fire Department will be affected, as with every other agency in this government. Their delivery of service will be impacted by the current financial situation we face.
Thank you, John, and thank you for your honesty in that, Mister Chair. I, again, I bring that concern up about the impact. And, and, and I know during these trying, trying, trying times and everything, and the agencies that would be impacted on this, it just, it just brings me much worry if we were to impose these cuts. So I support the Guthert's Amendment, and I thank you for giving me this time.
Senator Calvo, you're recognized.
Thank you.
On the Guthert's Amendment.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mister Chair. Again, Mister Chair, with the passage of the, of the previous amendment, there has been an automatic imbalance placed into the budget. With the passage of this amendment, if it does get passed, there will be a further increase in the imbalance of this budget. And obviously, it appears at this point, I don't see any of the senators to come up with other recommendations to how to balance this thing. But again, my concern, I am, since I've been in this legislature, working with the twenty-eighth Guam legislature, and now the twenty-ninth, we have prioritized education, health, and public safety. We have put a larger percent of appropriations to these agencies. And you could compare this to any legislature in previous times. So a greater percentage of the budgets have been put on education, public safety, and public health. With the Guthert's Amendment, again, it will attempt to restore the appropriation originally allocated for fire department. Now, understanding this and understanding also, like I mentioned before, that if we were to go along in this patch, path with which we are going into, then, again, you will have agencies that have funding fully restored. And then, we're going to have to deal with those other agencies that are not of the priority areas, again, which, again, the priorities areas account at seventy-seven percent of the budget. And they will be looking at, at base in how we're going here, cuts amounting to, since we're over halfway through the fiscal year, cuts of over forty, fifty percent. And obviously, some of these agencies have, have already spent that amount, so we'd be leaving them with zero. So, again, there is Department of Revenue and Taxation, Department of Administration, Department of Agriculture. There are other departments, including ourselves, the legislature, and the governors, and the state clearinghouse, and other agencies, Parks and Rec, the mayors, unless you consider the mayors, again, part of health, education, and public safety. We are being left with a terrible predicament. And I fear that, again, with the passage of the Guthert's Amendment, as much as I would like to see full restoration of appropriations of the budgets of the fire department, if we do not have the intestinal fortitude to allow for even a one percent cut, then I fear greatly at the direction that this legislative body is going. And though the senator made a comment that how difficult it would be for any one of us maybe to look at someone straight in the eye in education, health, or public safety, as a legislator too, it would be very difficult for me to look at the eye of some constituent when on one hand I promised them heaven, and then in the other hand, nothing was left but charred remnants of a balanced budget. Thank you very much, Mister Chair.
We're going to recess in, in just a moment here, so we can figure out what we're going to do tomorrow for the state of the judiciary. I do want to point out, in case no one has pointed out, just as a point of information for the body, that in the case of GPD and GFD and DOC, they have already been spared the five percent reduction. They were forgiven that. Just so you understand, yesterday, there was, or I'm sorry, was it yesterday? Yesterday, a motion was made to forgive GPD, DOC, and GFD from any application of the five percent. So the effect now is that there'll be no cuts whatsoever for those departments if this passes. We're going to take a recess right now, because I want to have a conversation about what we're going to do. Lujan Tenorio, who wants to make the motion? All right, Senator Tenorio, you want to make the motion?
Mister Chair, I move that we rise from the committee of the whole in the matter of bill number seventy-four, and that we will resolve to the committee of the whole tomorrow morning at nine-thirty at Judicial Center for the purpose of hearing the state of the judiciary. And upon resume, upon completion of which, we will again rise from the committee of the whole, I'm sorry, we will resume session here on the matter of bill number seventy-four where we're leaving off at this time.
And we will automatically move to exactly where we're left off at this time.
Which is the effect of what I said.
Okay. What that means is that when we're over at the state judiciary, we will not have a motion to adjourn. We'll just have a motion to recess and reconvene. Yeah, we're already in committee of the whole. Okay, on that motion, no objection, motion carries. Subsequent to the motion, we are in recess until nine-thirty tomorrow at over there, yes.